Good evening. Good evening, everyone. This is the November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of committee as a whole. I am the chair of this committee, Council President Nick Mosby. The time, just for the record, is five oh five. We will conduct a hearing that will be informative, that will also be respectful of opinions and times. Joining us tonight, in no particular order, we have Chairwoman McCray, Chairman Stokes, Councilman Glover, Councilman Bullock, Councilwoman Ramos,
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Cohen, Councilman Dorsey, and Councilwoman Porter. From my office, we have Erin DeGraffin Wright. From the mayor's office, we have Sophia. Is Nina here? Nina's not here, right? And it's, and we also have several members from the agency. We're going to kick this off with, I'm going to allow the sponsor of the bill. We're going to provide her deference, for her to go over, I guess, the motivation of where we are today. But then also, more importantly, so we're all on the same page. We're going to allow her to bring up any amendments or any changes that she feels that she's been working on with whether the administration, the advocates, or other council members. That way, we can start the bill off and we kind of all know where the direction of the sponsor is going, and we can all speak to the same book. So at this time, I'll yield the floor over to Councilwoman Odette Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for being here this evening for Committee of the Whole, and thanks to all of the advocates and to the agencies for being here. I want to start off first by also thanking you, Mr. President, for allowing me to work on this bill. This is really an important and landmark piece of legislation for our city, and very important, one of the many tools that we need to address affordable housing and to have more affordable housing. So inclusionary housing policies are designed to provide affordable housing options in areas that typically are out of reach for many residents and remove barriers to housing that were put in place by our racist housing policies of the past. We all know the definition of affordable housing being that folks would pay, a house is affordable, housing is affordable if people are paying thirty percent of their income. If they are paying more than that, which many of our residents in Baltimore City do, they are housing insecure. This particular piece of legislation is inclusionary housing, and the first piece of legislation that we had was back in two thousand seven. Many residents here were involved in that effort. Unfortunately, it only produced about thirty-seven units in fifteen years. It expired on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. The law, that law required the city to pay for most of the cost of affordable units, and when we could not do that, waivers were given. The law was completely ineffective and did not accomplish the goals of inclusionary housing policy. What our bill does here today, Council Bill twenty-two dash zero one nine five, it is introduced, it was introduced in February, and since then, we've been working diligently on amendments based on some concerns from the Law Department, as well as the work with advocates. And I just want to say, we have such a huge, strong coalition, and I want to thank each and every one of you for being a part of it. So this bill, high level, this bill with the amendments that we will go over, it requires developments of twenty units or more to create ten percent of those units as affordable for households earning sixty percent of area median income. And in Baltimore City, for a fan, the area median income in Baltimore City is about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So for a family of four at sixty percent area median income, that is about sixty-nine thousand six hundred dollars. I'm looking at a chart from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development that has all of our incomes, AMIs listed. So that's what the bill does. It also requires these same developments to add at least five percent if an additional subsidy is given to them, so that residents who are very low or extremely low income can also be a part of this. And with the amendments, this bill is applicable only to developments that already have a substantial public subsidy. So the original bill had no subsidy in it. This one is with the amendments, and it has to have a subsidy already in order to comply. This bill removes all of the waivers, so every, every development that has these criteria must comply, and it requires, requires an inclusionary housing plan prior to site review. And the inclusionary housing plan must include an affirmative marketing plan and also how the development will comply with the law. And the inclusionary housing plan has to be approved by the Inclusionary Housing Board prior to having permits pulled. Also, under my amendments, and this bill requires annual reporting by the property owner and also annual reporting by the department to the city council, and that the affordability timeline is moved from twenty years to thirty years, so that those units have to be affordable for thirty years, and the clock starts over, under these amendments, once there is major control, the, control of the units changes, so any change in ownership, majority ownership. And we have an enforcement clause. So those are the, that's the high level of the amendments. Each of you, and the bill, I think this is, we look forward to continuing this because we could have, given the fact that we had a high-performance tax credit and other subsidies, if the bill looked like what my bill does and the amendments right now, we would have, you know, over six hundred, six hundred units, six hundred and ninety units of affordability, if not more. And so that's pretty substantial to help families, that we have not been able to do that. So, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, I was just going to go over for the council members this chart that you all should have in your emails. If you don't have it in your emails, Mr. Green has hard copies of this chart here that I had sent out ahead of time. And Mr. Green has hard copies if folks need it. It's got the original language that we introduced in February and then the amendments to it. And as I go through there, through here, I'll also point out some items that we're going to have to change based on some input that I received from the, from the Law Department. So this chart is, Mr. Green has it if you need it. The first amendment, number one, is remuneration. Amendment number two is the definition of the commissioner, meaning the commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development. Amendment number three puts back original language in the definitions, adding language about major public subsidy, and then also adds that grants or loans equal to fifteen, to five percent of total projected costs also are included as major public subsidy. Continuation of amendment number three, adding tax credits as major public subsidy. Amendment number four is significant land use authorization, that if there is a significant land use authorization, that this also is what developments have to, if they get one of these, that they have to also comply with the law. Amendment number five just corrects some errors that we had in the original bill about the ranges. So it goes, making sure that we're looking at what low to moderate and very low and extremely low income ranges are. Amendment number six puts back in the categories of very low and extremely low income that we did not have in the original bill, or in the bill that we introduced in February. And amendment number seven also adds back the moderate and low-income categories. Amendment number eight is further clarification and definition of the income categories. Amendment number nine removes language that is not relevant to our bill. Amendment number ten is remuneration. Amendment number eleven is that, in the, in the February bill, we had a lot of language about an inclusionary housing manual, and there was concern that DHCD really can't make policy, it's the council that makes policy. And so we removed that and said that there will be rules and regulations in the manual, and just left it very simple in that regard. And amendment number twelve is further clarification about reporting requirements that the department has to the council, and that is the same as amendment number thirteen. Again, just adding back the low to moderate income and very low income categories. I know I'm going through this quickly, so if you've got questions, please let me know. Amendment number fourteen, again, basically says that this is only applicable to properties that have major public subsidy or significant land use authorization, which is a change from before. Amendment number fifteen is where we say that the developments have to allocate ten percent of their units for, for low-income households, which is sixty percent of AMI. Amendment number sixteen is again talking about the ten percent, and then in every residential property where more subsidy is given for very low income, which is fifty percent or below area median income, that the developer would need to take it and try to, and do up to an additional five percent. I should say at least, so we'll change that. Amendment number seventeen is language that we're going to have to change based on some information I got from the Law Department, which is, the intent here for this bill is not to be that if we ever approve a TIF or some other kind of subsidy, that the ten percent is all we do. That, the idea is that this is the floor, and that, you know, we can go higher up and negotiate up in those kinds of deals. There are specific language that the Law Department wants, would rather that we use for that, and I will add that once we are finishing up the amendments. Now, amendment number eighteen also needs some work. We have here very detailed specifics on what affirmative marketing is. We want to make sure that all of these units are filled, and there can be, you know, no way to fill them with anybody else, so the developers would have to do affirmative marketing. The language currently says that they have to do affirmative marketing to protected classes and others that would likely apply. We would need to change the language slightly so that it's just clear that they have to do affirmative marketing, and we're still working through what that might, what that might look like. But it is something that, in talking with my colleagues, affirmative marketing is extremely important as well. Amendment number nineteen removes the references to all of the fair housing laws because those are already on the books, and they have to be followed, and if they get changed, we don't have to change the law. Obviously, we have to file, bless you, we have to take care of that. I'm on amendment twenty, which is the reporting requirements for the developer every year that would then feed into the annual report that the commissioner would provide for us. This one removes, oh, we had some language in the initial bill about first preference for neighbors in the area, and that has been removed. I believe the Law Department had an issue with that as well. And then, amendment twenty-two is remuneration. Amendment twenty-three is looking at affordable housing costs so that the, for that unit, the only rent that the developer can take is that, is that thirty percent of their, of their income, and that's what that says. The affordability period is thirty years, that's what amendment number twenty-four is, and that the, it only changes if there is a major ownership control, and excuse, excuse me, it's thirty years, and it's, the clock starts over when there's a change in ownership. And then, there is a penalty at the end. We removed from the, from the bill that they would lose their subsidy, which we can't do. So, but there is a penalty. So those are the amendments so far. Because of some input from the Law Department, we will be doing some more. But also, there's still, as you know, from seeing the report from the Department of Housing and Community Development, that there are other items that they are interested in adding to this, which I think is good. There are still things that we have to work out. So for instance, again, the, we do want to add a little bit more definition to what the Inclusionary Housing Board would be doing. We also want to address the issues that the Law Department had brought up with a couple of my amendments, which I talked about. And then you'll hear from DHCD about a couple of items that have been recommended by the enterprise report, and if I may, I'm going to address some of those right now. One is that DHCD is recommending an additional tax credit of fifteen, one-five percent for these units, and they would be, the ten percent would be split, the ten percent of the allocate, of the units would be split between five percent and, or eighty percent and sixty percent AMI. I do have a spreadsheet that I just put together and did not send around, but it does have what, what the gap is. And according to my calculation, the gap is really three percent. It is not fifteen percent. So we can certainly talk more about what that looks like. And then also, there's concerns about where this fifteen percent would come from, considering that we're already spending a hundred and twenty-six million dollars in tax credits every year, and so what, what that would do. So can we do a non-cash subsidy, which is something that we are discussing? The enterprise report also recommends a fee in lieu, and to me personally, it seems like that's a way to get out of the inclusionary requirements. And so we would, if we're going to do it, we would need a very, very high threshold. But also, I think, again, the whole design for why we're redoing this bill to make it work is to eliminate any waivers in ways that the requirements wouldn't fit. So those are two that I just wanted to bring up, and I know my colleagues might have more questions about that. And with that, Mr. President, I concluded my remarks, beginning remarks, and ready to hear from the agencies. And also, I'm happy to take any questions in the meantime.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Ramos. We're going to jump right into the agency reports, and then colleagues, we're going to open it up for like any questions you might have for the bill sponsor or, or the agencies. First up is the Law Department. They have an unfavorable, can you guys hear me? I'm sorry. Through the mask. There's an unfavorable, I'll, I'll go over the instructions again. Sorry, I thought you could hear me. So what we're going to do is, we're going to jump into the agency reports now. So each agency that is tied to this bill will have the opportunity to speak on behalf of the agency, whether they oppose, whether they support, whether they think there should be some modifications associated with the bill. From there, we're going to turn it over to council members to provide any questions, any concerns for the agencies, as well as for the bill sponsor. And then after we get out of that phase, we're going to turn it over to public testimony, where everyone will have two minutes to provide their opinion and their concerns or their support of the bill. So we're all good? All right. So the first agency that we have up is the Law Department. The Law Department is unfavorable. And who's here to speak on behalf? Hillary's here to speak on behalf of the Law Department?
I, Mr. President, Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. Our report reflect the first reader version, which we couldn't approve because there wasn't essentially any benefit in exchange for the requirement, which is a constitutional issue. But all of the amendments that the sponsors put forward addresses, addressed that, and so with an amended bill, we certainly could approve it. And we've been working with the sponsor for review of those amendments. So with that, you know, we anticipate getting to a point where we would approve it for form and legal sufficiency.
Anything else for the Law Department to add at, at the time? No, thank you so much, Hillary. Next up, we're going to go at the planning. They basically defer to Department of Housing and Community Development. Next up, Department of Finance. We do have Department of Finance's opinion, came in a little late. I believe we have Deputy Director Sennemi here to speak on behalf of the Finance Department.
Hi, thank you. Bob Sennemi, representing the Department of Finance. Wanted to share a couple of thoughts about our bill report and our, our look at this bill. So, you, first off, we looked at this bill, of course, from the perspective of, you know, the cost or benefits of the city, also thinking about the impact on the real estate market. I just want to remind folks tonight that our ability to deliver just basic city services, is highly dependent on the health of the real estate market. About fifty percent of our property tax revenue, fifty percent of our general fund revenue, I should say, comes from property taxes. And, you know, over the last five years, we've also collected nearly a million, a hundred million dollars a year in transfer and recrutation taxes. So this isn't a theoretical exercise for us. If we impact the housing market, you know, we would expect lower revenues. So we, we looked at it from an eye, from that perspective as well. For a program like this to work, I think logic would dictate that if you put any requirements in, in like this, there has to be such strong enough demand for housing that developers would still build even with those requirements. And so the enterprise report, we looked at very closely. We thought it was a pretty good report, did a nice analysis of the market, and they were looking for, can the city market absorb these kind of requirements in difference, what they called submarkets? They laid them out in terms of three categories, core, strong, and transitional. Core being the highest end, the highest rents, highest housing values, transitional being the lowest. And what they found in their report is that for the, 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 the last two, the strong and the transitional, that development is already infeasible for multifamily housing. So what they said was any, any additional requirements, inclusionary requirements would, would cause hardship for builders to the point that maybe they wouldn't build in those, in those submarkets. For the highest end, for the core submarket, which is, when you look at the maps in the report, it's a very narrow part of the city. It's just harbor-adjacent neighborhoods, little bit of part of Federal Hill, a little, small part of Mount Vernon. In those neighborhoods, it was more mixed. They said that the, the inclusionary requirements would be feasible with some additional subsidy, as Councilwoman Ramos had, had mentioned. So what we did for our analysis is we went back and we said, okay, for that core submarket, that very narrow slice of the city, what would have happened over the last ten years? What would the cost have been if we would have had this requirement, but a requirement or, or the allowance of an additional fifteen percent tax credit? What would that have cost the city over the last ten-year period? And what we, what would we have gotten in terms of the number of affordable units built? And so we, when we looked at that, over the last ten years, there would have been, there were twenty projects, multifamily housing projects that were built in the, this core submarket that got the high-performance market rate tax credit. It would have cost us an additional nine point nine million dollars over that ten-year period. So again, the tax credit today is eighty percent for the first five years, and then it declined seventy, sixty, fifty, forty, thirty, over the last five years of the credit. So what we did is we went back and added the fifteen percent. So it would go from eighty to ninety-five, you know, seventy percent would become eighty-five, et cetera, and tried to figure out, what does that cost? What is that difference? What would we have cost ourselves in lost tax revenue? So we would have cost ourselves about nine point nine million dollars in lost revenue. There were a total of three thousand four hundred and ninety-seven units built during that time in those projects. Ten percent of that, again, I know the bill has been amended a couple ways, but we looked at, what would ten percent have gotten us? There would have been three hundred and forty-nine affordable units built in that timeframe. But again, it would have been a cost to the city of about nine point nine million dollars. You know, we're not wild about subsidies unless it's absolutely required to have the development built, right? Because that's a cost to the city. So, you know, in our bill report, we wanted to point out that we should be looking at every possible non-financial way to potentially get something like this implemented. That would include, and there were things in the enterprise report that I think were good ideas, things like parking requirements, could you loosen those? Height restrictions, if there is, are in place, and other things, making sure that we take advantage of, of the space we have, and to try to make these projects as, as feasible as possible for developers. So that concludes my remarks. And again, to summarize, I would just say, we're very, you know, want to be honest and say, we're very concerned about the impact on the market, especially that transitional and what's called strong submarkets, which is the vast majority of the city. We do think there could be some kind of solution in what the, the enterprise report calls the core submarket, which is a narrow part of the city that's the highest-end neighborhoods with the highest prices. But we would strongly consider, recommend that we look to all non-subsidy kind of sources and ideas before we would just, you know, ask the city to pick up this cost. Again, remembering that we're, we're a city with a low tax base, very challenging to deliver good services to our residents, and we certainly don't want to impact the city in a negative way with something like that.
Thank you, Deputy Director Sennemi. Next, we're going to go to Department of Housing and Community Development. Madam Commissioner?
Oh, it's, we're good. Good evening, Mr. President, members of City Council. I'm here this evening, Alice Kennedy, Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development. This evening, I'm joined by our executive advisor, Stacy Freed, as lo, as well as Stephanie Murdock, our community constituent liaison and council liaison, as well as online, we have this evening with us, Mr. Stephen Riley, who's one of the members of the consulting team with HR and A that was key in doing and looking at the feasibility and financial analysis associated with the report. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on City Council Bill twenty-two dash oh one nine five. You know, at the outset here, I want to express my appreciation for the work of the sponsor to the council president for chairing and calling this committee hearing this evening, for the members of the Inclusionary Housing Advisory Board, for the members of the Inclusionary Housing kind of study steering committee, the advocates that are with us here this evening, our consultants, DHCD staff, and all of those across the city who have been and who are working diligently to improve the city's inclusionary housing policy. As we all know, the previous inclusion, inclusionary housing law failed to achieve the objective of creating affordable housing opportunities and encouraging economic diversity across our city neighborhoods. Complicated requirements, including an unfunded subsidy mandate, created financial as well as administrative obstacles in order to implement the requirements of that law. I think all of us here have a goal of ensuring that we do not repeat the mistakes of the past by inadvertently creating an approach that may not be feasible or that won't produce affordable inclusionary units. As part of our ongoing work towards, working towards, you know, looking at getting an effective inclusionary housing law, we did retain the enterprise project team, which was comprised of enterprise advisors, enterprise community's Mid-Atlantic office, and the HR and A advisors to prepare the recommendations that we would, you know, look at with the goal first and foremost of looking at how we can increase the number of inclusionary units produced in Baltimore City. We also wanted to look at creating a program that would be predictable and efficient for establishment of these units, because part of this is also the implementation of a program to ensure that that is easy to implement for all parties involved. So there were three phases. The first phase was the assessment of the two thousand and seven ordinance. The phase two was kind of the feasibility analysis and modeling inclusionary housing units that could be under different market scenarios. And, you know, phase three included policy recommendations and kind of draft format of potential legislative policy goals. In order to achieve the goals of increasing units and creating predictability, and most important, supporting equitable neighborhood development, the policy recommendations are centered around three principles that are also described in the final enterprise study. It's alignment with market activity, the development realities and the local needs, the importance of clear and consistent program administration, and the importance of ongoing monitoring and compliance. I do want to emphasize, you know, how much myself, our colleagues at DHCD and the mayor's office have appreciated the opportunity to work collaboratively with the sponsor since the introduction of the bill that we're here discussing this evening, and looking at, you know, working through what constitutes and how to get to a feasible approach to a very complex policy problem. I mean, this impacts a significant issue within our city, which is affordable housing and how we are creating those units. Ultimately, in, we do recommend that the Baltimore's inclusionary housing policy be applied in neighborhoods where inclusionary units are feasible, given market condition, and a program that is administered with clarity and consistency. It would improve policy performance in four It would improve policy performance in four different key ways. We'd have increased unit production, which is a goal that we all want to see, economic integration in higher-cost neighborhoods, standardized policy application, and simplified administration for staff and the entities that are developing the inclusionary units. Our recommendation would state forth that the inclusionary housing legislation include different, some different requirements than what are laid out in the bill. We also made comments based off of the original draft of the legislation, so we will look forward to kind of working through the amendments that were introduced here this evening and seeing those. This would look to apply to projects with 30 more, 30 or more units located in the core markets, 10% of the units designated as inclusionary housing, and would be allocated equally between households earning 60% AMI and households earning 80% AMI. Units designated as inclusionary units would also be subject to a 30-year affordability period, and, you know, looking at the additional, either 15% property tax abatement or other ways that we could, you know, create feasible options to be able to create these units. We've submitted our bill report, the final enterprise report, to the committee for record. We also, you know, know that we have, as the sponsor mentioned earlier, we have discussed and have identified some areas of consensus, and we've also identified some areas where we have not reached consensus and hope to continue to work through those. Some of the areas we do disagree are detailed in our bill report and will be, you know, further explored, I'm sure, in further discussions in continued hearings and work sessions for this, and also with the sponsor. Some highlights of some of those areas where we are kind of not at consensus would be, you know, the required inclusionary. Now, I believe that that was an amendment that did change from the original bill from 20% to 10%, so that we can kind of cross off at that point. I think the inclusionary housing units in the original bill also applied to the for sale, but I believe that we also kind of, that that was amended as well this evening. So we look forward to going through the legislative process to ensure a passage of a bill that aligns with the guiding principles of the policy and the framework. We support the mayor's commitment to equitable neighborhood development, support the consultant's recommendations as a way to increase the number of inclusionary housing units and create predictable and uniform standards for the units. And we support the intent of City Council Bill 22-0195 and remain committed to working with the administration, the bill sponsor, council president, and members of the council to achieve the objectives that are associated with inclusionary housing. At this time, we also have with us online Stephen Riley, who I'd like to present a short slideshow presentation overview of the feasibility analysis that answers some of the questions around the cost assumptions and predictions and modeling that occurred. So I believe we have set up.
Mr. Riley, are you on with us?
I am. Are you all able to hear me and see me?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear.
Excellent. Thank you all for having me this evening and accommodating me virtually. As Commissioner Kennedy said, I want to just talk briefly about the analysis that we did and sort of the findings that you just reviewed. Stephen Riley, I'm the principal with HR and A Advisors. We're a real estate and economic development advisory firm. Have worked on inclusionary zoning studies and policy. A number of cities across the country have helped implement policies in recent years, in cases like New Orleans, New Haven, Connecticut, a number of other cities. We've been part of the enterprise team over the past year or so, started working with DHCD in 2021, and really under the charge of, you know, recognizing that the 2007 policy was not working and conducting an analysis to understand, you know, what would be feasible within the Baltimore market and could be structured in such a way to really support production of affordable units. I will also note that our analysis was conducted prior to Councilmember Ramos's legislation, so it is independent of that and really focused on, you know, relative to the 2007 ordinance, how we could structure an inclusionary zoning policy again that worked to produce units. I will share my screen here, just briefly walk through some materials. Are you all able to see?
Yes, yes, we can see.
Excellent. So some of this has already been covered, so I'll walk through it quickly, but just want to sort of highlight, again, what went into our financial analysis and then, you know, the findings that a number of folks have already mentioned, what went into that, and what's the rationale behind that. Inclusionary zoning, at its base, is really unique in sort of how it provides affordable housing. You're increasing affordable housing supply, but you're doing so, you know, through the inclusion of those units in what would otherwise be market rate development. So creates really great benefits in terms of fostering mixed income development in buildings that would otherwise be fully market rate and providing that housing in areas of opportunity. So we have, you know, strong access to jobs, services, amenities, things on those lines. We started our analysis at first looking at the 2007 policy and understanding what was constricting its ability to be successful and then how, you know, we would then look to adapter or modify that. So I'll start here, sort of with our key set of findings, and then backtrack into, you know, what went into that. But our findings on the 2007 policy were, you know, it set an ambitious affordability goal of 20% set aside in new projects, but was really constricted by the inability to actually provide funding to support that 20% set aside. And so resulted in exemptions for most projects that, you know, then led to the production of those 3070s, as Councilmember Ramos noted. And so in thinking through potential for a new IZ policy, I would really be thinking through, how do you, rather than, you know, putting the onus on the city to be providing the contribution, sort of provide a mandate that all development be, you know, that is, you know, within designated locations for IZ, be mandated to provide those affordable units and, you know, under analysis then that in the core market locations, a 10% set aside could be supported with the provision of additional tax abatement. And while it's a lower set aside, you know, 10% relative to the 20% that existed in the 2007 policy, it actually would result in an increase in production of units, a very large increase, given the sort of lack of ability to be exempted from the requirement. And when we looked at market conditions, a couple of others have noted this as well. We broke out the city into three market types based on housing market typologies that the city has defined and established, you know, core market, strong market, transitional market locations. When we look at market rate development that's occurring in the city today, feasibility really is limited to the core market locations and is almost exclusively rental apartments for multifamily buildings that are more than 30 units. And that to a signal of the, you know, the fact that a policy would be most successful when geographically targeted and really concentrated on those strongest market locations where new market rate development is occurring today without potentially limiting, you know, other locations in the city that it's more difficult to support market rate development. So with that, I'll walk a little bit through our financial analysis, hopefully provide an understanding of sort of how we were arriving at those findings. When we think very broadly about, you know, advancing new development, we like to start with this chart of looking at a base level, you know, making sure that revenues that are generated by new development equal the operating costs associated with that development. And so, you know, having required market rent thresholds that you actually have to hit in order to cover those costs and be able to support new development. When you can meet that feasibility threshold, you can support new development. If you can't meet that threshold, you're not going to be able to have new building or development occur. So when there's an IZ policy in place, you know, that will, you know, relative to a fully market rate development, that will lower the market rate rents that are collected because there's fewer market rate units. Some of that is made up by the addition of affordable rents that are provided through, you know, the affordable units provided set aside. But those affordable rents are, of course, lower than the market rate rents. And so more often than not, you then are left with a feasibility gap. And that's what we really focus on when we're doing our analysis, is thinking through, you know, how to close that feasibility gap to ensure that you're not inhibiting the ability of new housing to be produced and are, again, able to support affordable unit production. And generally, that's done through, you know, incentives or contribution of some kind from the city. We'll get a moment into the tools that are used to do that. But when a policy is not calibrated appropriately to the local market, that's what really can then harm housing production and also harm the, you know, the goals of the program to develop affordable units. And so when we're doing our analysis, it's really thinking through, you know, based on where the market conditions are in that local market, what is the maximum number of affordable units or the deepest levels of affordability that we can achieve with the tools that are available to us. And, you know, one case study that we often point out is a policy that was put in place in Portland in 2017 where the sort of balance was not kept in check, and after the policy was put in place, production decreased by nearly 65% of new multifamily development. And that was largely due to an imbalance in the incentives that were provided relative to the requirement that was put in place. And so when there's that type of decrease, not only are you reducing housing supply, but you're also not getting the affordable units that are the goal of the policy. So again, that calibration is really important in terms of, you know, maximizing affordable production but not doing so to a point where it, you know, inhibits new housing production. So we undertook our analysis for Baltimore really with framed by three guiding questions. First, what is the baseline feasibility of market rate development today? So, you know, outside of IZ or any affordability considerations, what's the ability to build new multifamily housing? Second, thinking about, you know, the tools and incentives available to support an inclusionary policy. And then third, you know, based on that feasibility and the incentives available, you know, how can affordability be maximized within that context? So first looking at market rate development, again, we broke out three different market types: core, strong, and transitional markets. And within those established feasibility thresholds, where we looked at what's called the yield on cost, which more simply can be thought of as sort of the returns required to make development financially feasible. And when we look at multifamily development in the city today, really only see feasibility within those core markets. And then a couple others noted the lack of feasibility in the strong and transitional markets, and that's where this comes into play, where market rate development in general is difficult to support. And so putting in place additional affordability requirements are not likely to, you know, then put development in those places in a place where they're able to advance. We then looked at the set of incentives and tools that were available to support a policy. And we break these down really into two categories that we typically look at for IZ incentives. The first is land use incentives. So these are things like density bonuses or reductions in parking requirements. And we always look here first to understand what is the ability to apply these types of tools that don't necessarily incur a fiscal cost to the city. Unfortunately, in the case of Baltimore, these incentives aren't really applicable because the land use tools don't add value to projects with the local market. And this was informed based on some conversations we had with the planning department, conversations with developers that are active in the local market, as well as our own review of zoning policy in the city. But, you know, from a density bonus perspective, the, you know, there's already a fair amount of density available, and there's enough for what developers are looking to build. And in instances, in many instances, you know, if there's a density bonus provided, it would then, you know, building at a higher density would trigger a different construction type. So moving from wood-stick-built construction to concrete construction, for example, where there's additional costs, and that additional cost sort of counteracts the bonus provided, the value provided. So there wasn't really value in that. And similar with parking reductions, you know, the mark, there's a certain level of market demand for parking, and based on where requirements are today, the ability to reduce that is fairly marginal and was not perceived as something that could provide meaningful value to support, you know, what would be required for an inclusionary policy. And so where that left us was really looking at subsidy incentives and the tax abatement that's been referenced, and recognizing that for almost all projects that are being built in Baltimore today, you know, there's existing, you know, tax credits in place through the high-performance tax credit primarily, but also through some other programs. And being mindful of that and sort of how much additional abatement could be provided. Based on that context, we looked at a 15% tax abatement. So the high-performance tax credit over the 10-year period is an effective rate of about 65% of property taxes. So 15% above that, but still leaving some shared revenue that would go to the city. We generally don't recommend any policy that would provide a full 100% abatement where there's not ability to cover, you know, fiscal costs that are also incurred by that development. So when we, sort of with all those considerations, then ran a number of models, and a sort of sample of which are shown here, and starting on the left, looking at sort of baseline where there's zero affordable units, and then, you know, scaling to the right with increasing, you know, set asides of affordability and, you know, deepening AMIs at essentially then, again, wanting to understand what is sort of the maximum affordability that could be supported. And in running that analysis, the maximum that we found with the tools available with the market conditions that we see in Baltimore was that 10% set aside, 5% of which would be at 60% AMI, 5% of which would be at 80% AMI. When we move above that, the cost burden that is put in place by that requirement really, you know, outweighs the benefit provided by the incentives and the ability of projects to cover that cost and remain feasible. And that's where you end up with infeasible development and potentially constricting new housing production from occurring. So that's really what's informing, you know, how we got to that number. And then the policy framework in terms of, you know, looking at the 2007 policy and how that differs from what a future feasible policy might look like, which again, is that 10% set aside, but this is between 60 and 80% AMI, the focus on core market locations, the provision of the additional tax abatement, and then really significantly having, you know, no exemptions available. So for all those projects that are built in those core locations, ensuring that you're getting that new affordable unit production. And then lastly, just quick provision or quick precedent example for you all, just in case helpful to understand typical policies that are placed in other locations, a couple of these in which we've worked personally, but most typically across the country, IZ policies typically target AMIs between 60 and 80%, and set asides ranging from 5% to 15%. And you'll see some variation between that, but that is overwhelmingly the most common sort of ranges that you see, and that is really dictated by, you know, how IZ is structured and how it fits within the context of market rate development. There are a number of examples of cities that have tiered policies. So New Orleans is a really good one. Boston is another, where there's sort of geographic locations where they're either different set aside requirements or, you know, mandatory requirements in certain locations and voluntary opt-in options, you know, locations. One thing I will note is that very few IZ policies target AMIs at the extremely low income level, and that's generally due to the deep level of subsidy that those units require. And again, within the market rate development context, the way that IZ is structured, you're typically not getting the most bang for your buck from an affordability perspective. So while there are a number of other programs and policies that do support units at those AMI levels, again, typically for most IZ policies, the most effective ones really, you know, won't typically go lower than about 50% AMI. That's a very quick summary. Our analysis obviously covered much more detail and happy to answer questions to the extent that there are any on that. Also just flag, we do have an appendix of additional analysis inputs and assumptions, so, you know, don't need to go through in detail, but just wanted to... So, you know, don't need to go through in detail, but just wanted to make clear, as we're developing these prototype scenarios, we're looking very deeply at market conditions and what's occurring in the local market context in terms of, you know, types of development that's occurring, how we're modeling in different development costs for land, vertical hard costs, soft costs. How we're looking at, you know, achievable rents of their operating revenues and how that compares to operating expenses, financing conditions and how that impacts feasibility. So there's a lot of really detailed assumptions that go into this modeling and then thinking through, what is the feasibility of development? How does, you know, layering in of inclusionary requirements change and impact that? And so that's what goes into our analysis and then generating those results. So I'll pause there, but appreciate the time and, you know, listening to me talk through this. And then again, happy to answer any questions as folks have them.
Thank you, Stephen. I do have a couple of questions before we go there. Is the Housing Authority here? Housing Authority, uh, do you, would you like to speak on behalf of Housing Authority?
We stand by our report and amendments as D H C D suggested. Thank you.
I figured you would throw it over to D H C D. So thank you so much. And then also Department of Real Estate did not take a position. Again, they'll probably be, they will probably be in alignment with the Housing Authority. And then we don't have reports from the Planning Commission or the City Administrator. We're going to turn it over and first, I have a couple of questions, then I'm going to go to the sponsor of the bill. And then we're going to go in the order in which I receive questions from the council members. Before we jump into that, I know that we have Chairman Costello who's joined us. We also have Chairman Slyfer who's joined us. And we have Councilman Torrance from the Seventh District who's joined us as well. I have a couple of quick questions. One from Stephen, if you're still on. Steve, are you still there? Perfect.
Yes, yes.
This is like a mixed question for you as well as you, Commissioner Kennedy. There's a vast difference between inclusionary zoning and inclusionary housing. Now, the bill is structured to be inclusionary housing bill. But I think all the presentation that you provided to us, Stephen, was associated with inclusionary zoning. Just trying to understand how his presentation fits into the support of housing. Is housing in more support of inclusionary zoning or inclusionary housing? Or explain if I'm missing something?
No, we don't typically differentiate between the two.
Oh, okay. So when I hear inclusionary zoning, I hear that depending on, based off the characteristics of a city, the socioeconomics potentially will determine where certain credits are, where certain policies handle. But when you say inclusionary zoning, you're saying applied across the entire city as this bill does?
So when we're talking about inclusionary zoning, the analysis that we had done focused on and recommended a policy in, you know, what were defined as the core market locations. But I think we're talking about the same thing in terms of referencing inclusionary zoning or inclusionary housing.
Okay. So when we're talking about the market, we're talking about the entire city of Baltimore. We're not talking about individual zones that would have individual characteristics and potentially individual incentives.
Yes. When we conducted our analysis, we did so at the submarket level. And analyzing that, that's how we got to the, you know, the different market types that were defined.
Submarket meaning, just so we're clear, submarket meaning the Baltimore market.
Neighborhoods and locations within Baltimore City. So again, that's where we're defining those different market types of the core, strong, transitional.
But this.
That was, that was based on the housing market typologies map that the city produces. So we're looking at conditions, market conditions within Baltimore City within these different market types. And that's what's being used to conduct the analysis and the ultimate recommendation around the core market locations.
Understood. So we're clear, Commissioner, this bill is applying across the entire city, no matter the zone or no matter the neighborhood. I just want to make sure we were all on the same page.
So the legislation twenty two dash zero one nine five does propose a citywide application. What we've looked at and what D H C D has proposed and in our bill report is that the inclusionary housing slash zoning would be applied in only the core market areas, given or the market areas that can support the creation of those inclusionary units.
I just think that that's a big difference and it's important for us to distinguish the two, just so we're kind of all on the same page. Then, you know, from a D H C D perspective, the report is favorable. But it's really favorable with the caveat of maybe we look at it from a zoning perspective.
It's not from a zoning perspective, it's from a.
I don't want to play semantics, I get, but broken down in different areas.
Correct. It's from a real estate market perspective, based on geographic components. Because in the city of Baltimore, the real estate market is different across the city. So it's looking at it in the specific in the core markets, which have the stronger market capability to support the inclusionary units.
Understood. Just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page. Thank you for clearing that up. Commissioner Kennedy, as well as Stephen. Now, I have one additional question and we're going to turn it over to the sponsor of the bill. And as for finance, Mr. Sinemi, I think you went over and you talked about if, I guess, the current bill in its current form was applied ten years ago, we would be about nine point nine million dollars short. That number really didn't seem that scary to me. I mean, we're talking about a million dollars a year. So the first thing I jumped to is trying to understand in that same time period, how much subsidy did the city give out, say in like TIFs and pilots? And how did that compare to one another?
Thank you. So first, to answer your question, just to clarify, the analysis we did was not necessarily based on the bill as originally drafted. It was based on Enterprise's recommendation of that you could provide an additional fifteen percent subsidy to try to get that, you know, create enough incentive so that that development would still happen in the core submarket with the inclusionary requirements. I just wanted to be clear that that's why we costed that out. The nine point nine, it's the two thousand fourteen through twenty three period that we looked at. It's nine point nine for the total ten year period. But remember that, just want to remind folks that in the early years, the program was still new. So it actually gets up to about two point two million dollars per year in the latter half of that ten year cycle, whereas in the earlier years, there were just smaller subsidies. So nine point nine is the total for ten years, but on a going basis, it was more like two point two million dollars per year of what the lost revenue would have been for these type of requirements. And again, because they, remember the, because the projects layer one on top of the other, as more projects are getting the benefit of something like that, the total subsidy cost for that fiscal year is higher.
So based off your modeling, in that tenth year is about twenty percent of the total nine point nine, more than twenty percent of the total nine point nine, is that what you're saying?
That's right, yes. And your second question was about.
How does that compare to the same subsidies from a TIF and a pilot perspective?
Yeah, so I, you know, I don't have those exact numbers in front of me. But a couple of things to consider maybe is that the overall tax credit program is over a hundred and twenty million dollars per year already. So in my opinion, we have a pretty generous structure already. There's subsidies that cover almost every inch of the development landscape. You know, we have the high performance market rate, which is market rate development. We have a tax credit for, you know, new construction. We provide pilots for a lot of nonprofit driven affordable developments. One of them came to the board yesterday, of course. So we have a pretty wide array of tax credits or other types of incentives that are available. The tax credits themselves are already about a hundred and twenty million dollars. I'd have to go back and get the specifics on pilot agreements of what's the lost revenue and the TIF at the same time.
I mean, basically, the motivation behind my question is when we talk about the ten million dollars, I know you're saying that twenty percent of it came in that last year. If you could send me that modeling, definitely interested in seeing it.
Sure.
When we compare that to pilots and TIFs, I would assume that it kind of dwarfs that number. I don't want to make assumptions, but was wondering like when we look at that comparison. I think the difference is the cost value for our communities. We understand and know, and, you know, I've been very vocal about this, that concentration of poverty is one of the main issues that we have in the city of Baltimore. I mean, I would say Baltimore City is probably a poster child for concentration of poverty. And it's directly driven from policy, whether it was unintended or was explicitly done through some of the racist real estate policy that the city has enacted over the past couple of decades. So, you know, when we talk about like the pilots, particularly for like nonprofits, you know, when we're putting, you know, thirty percent below AMI, you know, all in the same hundred and fifty apartment buildings. Or we do the high performance tax credit where it's all somewhat market rate. There is no mixed income type of policy that the city has from an incentive perspective. And that's really where we need to go. I mean, we know that through empirical data, particularly as it relates to the level of concentrated poverty that we have in our community. So when we talk about rebuilding communities like Greenmount, or we talk about rebuilding communities like Park Heights, they're not going to be rebuilt in a responsible way based off of real estate if we continue down the road that we're on. So that's why I'm really interested in comparison to like when we look at the TIFs that have been down the harbor and around downtown and Central Business District, or we look at pilots, which predominantly go in marginalized, poor black communities of East and West Baltimore. You know, how does that dictate a policy that makes sense from a real estate perspective? So in ten and fifteen or twenty years, we can look back and know that we were responsible for really driving real change in communities that have been disproportionately disinvested in for far too long. So really interested in hearing from a finance perspective on that because, you know, these apples and those oranges just don't compare, right? So I hear that, you know, we put out incentives, but yeah, we put out incentives for market rate. We put out incentives for extremely poor. But right now, we're really talking about how can we develop communities of mixed income? So, you know, everyone benefits from it.
Yeah, I think that those are all really important points and good points. What I would add from our perspective is, you know, we released a report a few months ago about the city's overall tax credit structure. And we did find that a lot of the incentives tend to be in a very narrow part of the city. Not all of them, but many of them, a large majority of them. So I think you're on to something here is which, yeah, some of our pilots for nonprofit driven developments for affordable units largely are going in certain places. Some of our tax credits are happening in a pretty narrow slice of the city, more the high end or the more expensive neighborhoods, so to speak, from a real estate standpoint. And then you kind of wonder about those middle neighborhoods. I mean, my feeling has always been in those more middle neighborhoods, that's where you really have to do, the development is more likely with a small incentive and you really want to be driving it there. And maybe being smarter about the incentives for some of the markets that are higher end essentially.
And here lies, that's really kind of the question because what we're seeing, when we've been looking at over the past couple of years, are some of the pilots now creeping into our middle class communities, right? Which really should be great areas for mixed income type of developments. We know that when we look at the census reports, that's where we're seeing the biggest loss of population in our city, particularly in middle class black communities because of disproportionate amount of disinvestment for so long. Unfortunately, when we look at our policy from an incentive perspective, and you're exactly right, it cuts right down the road. So for the high performance tax credits and those incentives, they're in the white neighborhoods. And for these pilot type programs to these nonprofits, they're in black communities. Herein lies again, the issue of if we're going to do an all inclusive, a mixed income type of setting, which we know the empirical data states, you know, the policy that we have currently set in place does not do that. So definitely interested in working with you and hearing any recommendations there. But an answer from finance to say like, hey, look, we already gave out enough incentives, doesn't really go to the question of equity that the administration has talked about from day one. And we're not necessarily seeing a housing policy.
Yeah, I think those are fair points, understood. And on the pieces that you asked for, FOBs, we can certainly provide that information.
Thank you so much. And before I move on, Steve, if you're still on or Commissioner Kennedy, can you make sure that the body receives that presentation that Stephen put up? Okay, so now we're going to turn it over. Thank you so much, Deputy Director, as well as Madam Commissioner. Now we're going to turn it over to council questions. First, providing deference to the sponsor of the bill, we're going to go to Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just going to start with two questions and then let my colleagues, because I know they have questions as well. The gap analysis that we just, I mean, I'm calling it a gap analysis. This is the report we just saw was calling a feasibility analysis. And it includes, you know, lots of different costs. And it was, you know, I get that the capital stack structures are really complex in these developments. But it seems to me like what we're really talking about here is the gap between what the rent would normally be and then what the sixty percent of AMI families can afford. So for a family of four, according to the Maryland Department of Housing Community Development, a family of four can afford the rent of seventeen hundred and forty two dollars, which I think that's really high, but that's what they say. And so if there is a building with a hundred units, and let's say the average rent is about twenty five hundred dollars, the gap is seven hundred and fifty eight dollars a month per unit. Which is seven hundred and fifty eight, seven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars per month with all of the ten percent units. So per year, that development is collecting about three million dollars in rent, which we would assume, hopefully, that that's covered all of their gaps. And I mean, all of their loans that they might have to pay and all the debt service and all of that, because that's what you're, you know, marking the rent up as. So with the ten percent units at sixty percent AMI, you know, you're collecting about two hundred and nine thousand dollars a year. The gap is only ninety thousand dollars a year. That's three percent of the total rent. So it might be, you know, I'm looking at it very simply as here's the rent we're going to charge. Here's the rent we have to collect. What's that gap? And according to my just back of the envelope analysis here, it's about three percent. So either we're trying to talk about, you know, additional costs or what a value might look like in terms of do these properties then devalue because there are affordable units in it? I don't think so. And so if the gap is just three percent, how do we make up that gap? It's not with a fifteen percent tax credit, it's with, you know, something else. So I guess, Mr. Riley, this is addressed to you. You know, I didn't, I didn't see this, again, this was back of the envelope. Well, now it's on a spreadsheet. But the analysis, the feasibility that you have, that was not the math that you were using. So can you kind of explain a little bit more, not in twenty three slides, but just, you know, the fifteen percent literally was just inserted in there. I just don't know where that comes from.
Yeah, so are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So, yeah, so our analysis was structured a bit differently than that in that we developed a full dynamic pro forma cash flow model to understand development feasibility. And so we're taking into account similar numbers to what you mentioned in terms of, you know, where market rents are, you know, what rents are at different AMI levels, what those differences are, what that does to overall project feasibility. And when we say project feasibility, again, we're referring to the data codes defined return metrics that are required in order to approach forward. And so, again, not having, you know, looked at the set of numbers you presented, but even a three percent difference in, you know, the rents that are being collected can have a, you know, that can have large swings in terms of the overall feasibility of a project. And the three percent costs of rents are different than the fifteen percent number of a tax abatement because the tax payment is based on the, you know, the tax rate that's associated with the property and inventory and all that. So they're not really equal percentages essentially. But at the end of the day, the analysis is trying to develop a similar approach to what you're doing is, you're creating a gap by providing additional affordable units. What is required to fill that gap? And based on our analysis, to meet that ten percent set aside, required a fifteen percent tax abatement in addition to the high performance tax credit benefit. Again, you could, if you wanted to, push that abatement higher and try and get additional affordable units. You then just, you know, get to a point where you're fully abating a project, which again, from a fiscal policy, we don't typically recommend as part of the analyses that we're doing. So we sort of kept ourselves at that fifteen percent. And then tried to figure out, you know, what is the most. is the most affordability that we can support at that level.
Okay, well, I'll look at your slides again in more detail, but I do have more, I will probably have more questions about that. And then my second question is, Commissioner, in the report and in the enterprise report, you had talked about that there might be a fee and lieu. Do you have a recommendation of what the, how that would be structured?
The fee and lieu would be looked at as a percentage based off of square footage, so it's an additional 30, yeah, the square footage plus 30% for fee and lieu. So, it's, the cost is actually, when thinking about it, it is a cost in structuring it that way, that is one that would not be a way to get out of this. It is meant to be structured in a way that is not something as a get out of doing the inclusionary units, but as a way of extranging waiting circumstances. That's why we put forth that there would need to be a significant proposal as to why they wouldn't be able to meet it, what the conditions are, et cetera. It's not just a blanket, anybody could come in and just check off a box that says, we don't want to do this, we want to pay a fee instead. Because the fee is actually set up in a way that would definitely also be financially detrimental to a project.
Right, so it's a square footage cost, which means you take the whole square footage of the entire development and divide that by the number of units, basically, and then what is, you know, then you bring it back up to the number of the square footage in each unit. And then, so that cost to build, right, not to maintain, but to build, plus 30%, which could be upwards of $300,000 depending on the unit. And then, that would be put in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
That is a possibility as a place. I don't think, you know, we've determined or stated exactly where, but having it go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to support affordable housing unit creation across the city makes the most logical sense to me when we think about where and how that fee and lieu would be utilized.
But you also said that they have to make a justification, so it just can't be that they don't want poor people and they're just in their unit, it had to be, you know...
Correct. I would, I don't think any of us would, I know, I would not accept a justification of just someone does not want a lower-income resident in a unit in their building.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, I'll yield to my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Next up, we're going to go to Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Transitional submarket areas are defined within the enterprise report as locations that are maturing and could possibly support market rate development in the future. I don't have to look at the map to know that majority of my neighborhoods are considered transitional submarket areas. The Phase II analysis found that market rate development is not feasible in strong or traditional submarket areas, even with incentives. How will this bill impact transitional areas, the ones that I represent, those middle-class, not middle-class, those middle neighborhoods in northeast Baltimore? And how would the city market those areas?
So, the bill as proposed by the sponsor and introduced is citywide, the recommendations that have been put forth by DHCD with the enterprise report in terms of looking at the core markets. We know that markets change within the city, so we also want to, A, support and encourage development and increasing market strength across our communities, and also being able to look at legislation that would state, and have to be tied in a way, that could pick up and shift as we have changes in market strength and changes in core markets to have, you know, the, as the core markets change, as strong markets shift to core markets, or weaker markets shift to strong markets, to be able to capture and increase inclusionary housing in those areas as well. So we would want to look at how to create legislation that would be able to support inclusionary units in those neighborhoods as we increase market strength.
Does DHCD have a middle neighborhoods strategy or report?
We do have, we've been partnering with the Planning Department on a middle neighborhoods plan and strategy. We also, as part of the mayor's commitment with the ARPA commitment, we have funding that will actually be also utilized to support work in our middle neighborhoods, which is different as well, looking at it from a city holistic approach, with multiple different partners at the table. Previously, middle neighborhood strategy, in a lot of ways, has been kind of driven by the Healthy Neighborhoods Organization and, you know, Planning Department, Director Ryer, myself, and others are putting forth and will be addressing and driving a middle, our middle markets neighborhoods strategy.
Do you have a written strategy that you're able to share with the committee?
We have a draft, and so I will talk with Director Ryer, and we can get that over.
Okay, I would like that, Mr. President, as a committee request. Thank you.
Disagreeing, if you could, make sure we note that to follow back up with Commissioner Kennedy and Director Ryer. Next, we're going to turn to Councilman Torrance in the 7th District.
Sorry, I got to take this off. Just for the public's perspective, I am leaving early to attend a meeting in my district. I just want to make sure I get a few questions out, and then a few requests for myself from enterprise. Can you hear me?
You got to talk to the mic.
Perfect. My first question is more so strategy-wise, similar to Councilwoman McCray. As I look at the map, a large portion of my district is nowhere in any way included?
Councilman, they can't hear you in the back, you got to talk directly into the mic. Sorry. Just pull it, just pull it out.
There you go. Sorry. As I review the report, holistically, a large portion of my district is not included. Traditionally, it looks to be around the areas of Reservoir Hill, as well as Hamden, Medfield, and Woodbury. But I have a large portion of West Baltimore that is in desperate need of housing and affordable housing. So my question is, how will we use your tiered structure to impact residents in West Baltimore, more specifically, red line communities?
For the creation of inclusionary units, so the inclusionary units specific to this bill and this program are where we want to see inclusionary units created in market rate, market rate developments. And so we need to be where market rate developments are occurring. So, the challenges that we see in the councilman, that you and I have talked about, about areas of your district, you know, we are utilizing as many other tools in the toolbox that we have to create affordable opportunities and housing opportunities in the district. We have to, you know, reduce, in your district, and Councilman Bullock's district, you know, and others where we have higher rates of vacancies and so forth, we need to be addressing holistically, tackling those different components of vacancy, of community amenities, of community development, of culture institutions, grocery stores, all of the different green space, recreation space, all of those components that increase the markets within those neighborhoods so that they become, right, more attractive in terms of market rate development that can occur in the market. So, you know, there's challenges in terms of creating and building market rate units across, my apologies, across the city in different areas. We have to continue to bolster with other tools as well.
Yeah, and I get that. My main concern is, as I look at the developments that are happening in my district right now, we're seeing, thanks to in part through the administration, investment in marketing in West Baltimore, we're seeing an influx of middle-class incomes. And we're going to start seeing, so my next question is more so, while we have the core that you've created in terms of like the enterprise reports, beyond that, how are we planning for transitions in areas where we're going to see markets emerge eventually in the next couple of years? So I just want to understand, what is the thought in terms of, once we implement this, what happens when we have markets that emerge?
I think that that's part of what we need to work out and work through, as part, as we work through the legislation. If we're focused in core markets, how do we ensure that the legislation allows for capturing the transitional markets as they're moving and changing? Because that's what we want to see across the city. So how do we capture that, and how do we end up creating legislation that will support creation of inclusionary units at that time?
And then my committee request is, holistically, looking at this from a perspective of, as we're going through our comprehensive housing plan, how do we connect all of this together? Because if we're going to do inclusionary housing, we need to be deliberate about it as well in terms of the totality of our comprehensive housing plan.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the 1st District. Gentlemen from 1st District, Councilman Cohen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the agencies and the bill sponsor and everyone here. I'm deeply uncomfortable with the 15% additional tax credit, and I wanted to try to understand it. To me, the benefit being provided is the original credit, whether it's a high-performance market credit, or any other form of subsidy. So when we're talking about this boomlet district, which most of southeast Baltimore is included, I mean, we've got cranes all over the place, it's great, we actually grew pretty substantially in the last census, I'm trying to understand the discrepancy, and particularly, one of the things that stood out in the report was this idea that zoning density bonuses or parking bonuses wouldn't make an impact. That really surprises me. I just did a bill that we negotiated for about four years with a developer who very much wanted a density bonus over in my district. And so the idea that there's not substantial value in density in our booming markets, or that parking couldn't add value if you gave a parking bonus, is just really confusing to me. And so I was wondering, somewhat like my colleague, Councilmember Ramos, was saying, the 15%, first off, seems arbitrary, but second, what's the justification for saying that density bonus or parking bonus doesn't make an impact?
I'm going to ask Stephen to touch on that a little bit more. In general, part of that and those statements was based off of work that enterprise HRA did in evaluating projects, having conversations, looking at specific market conditions within the city, looking at the existing zoning code, and talking with the Planning Department. But I'm going to actually ask Stephen to elaborate a little bit more on those conversations and that analysis.
Yeah, so that's all right, Commissioner Kennedy. Initially undertaking the analysis from the outset, conducted a number of interviews with folks, and also did, you know, research on our, in terms of existing zoning in place, particularly in these locations where market rate development, you know, had been occurring in recent years and is planned. And through those conversations with the Planning Department, developers, with others, I've seen that, you know, there are, you know, many areas that have been upzoned, and in these places where market rate development is occurring of these multifamily buildings that are, you know, larger than 30 units and would be subject to an inclusionary policy, there wasn't value. Developers were already able to build the units that they wanted to build. And I mentioned this, I think, a bit earlier, but, you know, oftentimes, you know, developers are going to, are looking to build, you know, a stick-built building, and so that will max out somewhere between five and seven stories. And if you increase density above that, you're required to change construction types, which increases the cost of development and sort of, you know, reduces the value of additional density you're getting, unless your rents are, you know, much, much higher. And so, typically, you're running into hurdles in terms of getting that additional density doesn't actually add value to the project in a way that could support additional affordable units, because you're either incurring additional construction costs, or there's just not demand to support the density that would, you know, be built at that location. Does that answer your question?
I mean, it does, it just doesn't align with what I've seen to be true in my district, which is that density does add value, certainly in our hotter markets. And again, I can, really specific example, relatively recently, spent about four years negotiating with a developer on amending a PUD to increase density over in Harbor Point. I'm just confused because everything I've ever known about development, particularly in hot markets, is that density increases value. I'm also, again, confused by your statement that giving a parking bonus wouldn't increase value. I mean, I'm pretty sure it does. And so, to me, I would just say, I am far more comfortable with those types of bonuses, if you will, than I am with giving an additional 15% tax credit for folks to have low-income folks in their buildings, when we're already giving them a high-performance subsidy. That just seems like subsidy on subsidy to me. And if we can do it in a way that makes it frankly more environmentally sustainable, which is density and taking away parking, I really think we should explore that avenue before providing increased subsidy. That's all, thanks.
Next up, we're going to turn it over to Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Cohen has kind of opened the same door that I intended to ask about. Parking spaces cost $25, $30, $35,000 each to construct, particularly in larger developments, when there are structured parking below ground or above ground. I think it's more if it has to be below ground. The cost is really significant. That is getting paid for by somebody, and the cost of that is getting recouped by some means. There's no way that that's not being rolled into the rents of anybody who lives in any development that has to have parking. And, you know, right now, generally, we have a one-to-one parking minimum in the city. The only places where that is not the case is downtown, where we already require less parking, right? It's a one-half to one parking requirement in the C5 area and the downtown part of the city. But in middle-income neighborhoods, in middle neighborhoods, like the ones that I represent in northeast Baltimore, it's a one-to-one parking requirement, and that comes at a significant development cost. To Councilman Cohen's point, I also have recent firsthand experience where a developer would have built less parking into his project design if it didn't, you know, we have this process of, a developer needs to develop plans to a certain concept phase before they can really have them reviewed by the city, and before they can go before the zoning board if they want to ask for any variances. And by that time, it's so late in the stage that they've invested a significant amount of money into paying an architect to develop those plans, to where it would be financially unsensible for them to develop those plans to a high-concept level with the required parking, only to then go to the BMZA and say, I'd like... parking, only to then go to the BMZA and say, "I'd like a waiver on X percentage of the parking, and now I have to pay my architect..." If you grant that, I have to pay my architect to rework our entire plan, or pay the architect to, on spec, design the plans with the reduced parking, in the hope that when you get to a late stage in the design process, you'll go to the BMZA and they will give you the waiver. Nobody wants to take either of these chances, so they're just saying, "I'm not even going to try." But if they didn't have to go through that process of asking for permission to build less parking, they would. And this would, in fact, reduce their overall costs. They know this, they want this, and would be doing it if we weren't outright requiring this. That is evidence of the cost savings that could be incurred through not requiring off-street parking as part of developments. How in the world are we saying that that is not of value?
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey.
That's a question for us. That's a question.
Do you want, you want the administration or Steve?
I guess Steve is speaking to this. How is this not of value?
Yeah, so I should qualify or clarify. We always, when we're doing this type of analysis for Baltimore and elsewhere across the country, we always prioritize land-use tools as sort of the first place we look to try and understand, is there value to support an inclusionary requirement? And to your point, reducing parking is a great way to do that. If you have structured parking, it's around $25,000 space. If you have underground parking, it's up to $50,000 space, sometimes more. So reducing that can really reduce total development costs and support feasibility in a way that creates value, can support affordable units. Again, it was based on the outreach that we had done at the outset of our analysis. The feedback that we received was that the market demand for parking and what's required to get people interested in living in buildings, and what developers are needing to provide, couldn't be lowered that much to where it creates a large enough impact to support the affordability goals of an inclusionary policy. But you are correct. If you are able to reduce parking, that is a source of value. And again, we always prioritize land-use tools as the first place we look when we're trying to assess that feasibility.
Yeah, I mean, look, if I'm building 100 units, and I cut 20 out of the 100 currently required parking spaces, and we're estimating those parking spaces at a cost of $30,000 each, I just saved $600,000 on my upfront construction costs on the project. That's a lot of money to have to repay to my investors or my mortgage lender over time. That's a lot more than $600,000 that I have to repay over time. That's a lot of money to be able to pull out of my total construction costs, and certainly enough to more than cover the cost of a couple of units for some period of time. I mean, I don't understand how that doesn't help us get to the goal of a reduced overall cost for development that makes inclusionary aspects more feasible. There's like, and again, there are developers right now who are telling us that they would build less parking and incur less of a cost gladly if we weren't requiring it of them and even posing the basic barrier of a late-stage process of requesting a waiver of even the BMZA.
If that's the case, then yeah, you can use that as a source of value. I 100% encourage that. I don't disagree with that at all. I think it's, again, just based on what we had heard in our outreach and the ability to do that within the Baltimore market, in terms of, are residents going to be uninterested in a unit if they are not able to get parking because there's less than one-to-one ratio? And what investors or others will require in order for a project to get financing? So again, this is just based on what we had heard. If there is sort of precedent or ability to reduce parking, we would welcome that. We definitely want to look to that as a means of supporting the policy.
Mr. President, Deputy Mayor...
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Now, I'd like to call on Deputy Mayor Justin Williams. I'd like to speak on it fast.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, Justin Williams, Deputy Mayor for Community and Economic Development, to address the council members, Cohen and Dorsey. The question, and I don't know the full methodology of the Enterprise study, but looking at the map, I think what they may have been getting at is that the downtown core areas in blue, that the policy is recommended for C-5, they're mostly C-5, which has an exemption already for height and density and parking. So I think that's where they're saying, "Well, it won't move the needle," because it's already, there is no density max or height max or parking requirement there. And then in the areas north of the city that are also core, I think there might be an opportunity there, and to your point, more broadly, I know this is a big push of yours, Councilman Dorsey, to reduce parking requirements, to make housing affordable for everyone across the city, which is an admirable goal. But I think the issue for this northern part of the city is that if you still keep the larger setbacks in these areas and other requirements, even if you add a density bonus, you can only build so much as a practical matter that it wouldn't work. And I think the point that Stephen was getting to is that if you get to so much density that you have to go above five stories and switch to steel, that's when it becomes greatly or wildly more expensive, and that was why they are probably getting at that part. But I think there's worth narrowing and zeroing in on all the different incentives we can bring to bear.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to go to Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had some quick questions of just about the financial feasibility, and I brought this up to the bill sponsor during our working sessions. I wanted to talk through, when we're talking about the market rate and how it's assessed over time, the 20- to 30-year increase in time where we would be able to kind of formulate that project, how are we paying for that? Are we doing that through housing subsidy, state subsidy, or federal subsidy?
Through the 20- to 30-year...
Yeah, so in the enterprise report, we're talking through if the project is, changes, LLCs or corporations after 20 to 30 years, what would that revenue loss look like for the city?
What the revenue loss would look like for the city? I would need to get back to you on that piece.
And then secondarily, when we're talking through incentives for middle neighborhoods, I heard you speak of the middle neighborhood strategy. There are incentives. Can you specifically list those incentives that are used for those middle neighborhoods? How they would be integrated and kind of helping this particular policy?
So I think, you know, one of the things that we've been looking at, at our middle neighborhoods, specifically in terms of putting together, which we will share, the draft plan, is a core piece of middle neighborhood strategy is ensuring that we're preventing neighborhood declines. We want to prevent any vacancy. We want to prevent decline, looking at what we need to do with existing markets, attracting new residents, et cetera. Most of those are incentives that are going to be geared towards some of the home repair components, maintenance within those areas. How are we ensuring that we're providing kind of comprehensive city services and amenities and so forth? I can say, just off of top-of-the-head knowledge, without looking at some of the information, but I know that some of this exists in the finance department's report. You know, there are some areas within the neighborhood, within the middle neighborhoods, where we have seen the CHAP historic tax credit be used and other components there in terms of looking at incentives for development within those areas. Middle neighborhood strategy, from our standpoint, also looks at preservation of units, opportunity for creation, prevention of blight, and ensuring that we are strengthening versus risking neighborhoods going into decline.
So I appreciate that. And I remember the finance report that you're talking about, but we are seeing, like in real time, that's not happening for any of my district and south Baltimore communities. And so what I'm asking is, is that what are some real-time urgent steps that are going to be taken if we implement this policy that are going to be taken to address not only the neighborhoods that you're talking about, the tax benefits that you're talking about, but also how we're going to kind of elevate some of those neighborhoods that are, to my, you know, to my estimate, are not even in transition?
I think some of those, I would say, we can talk a little bit more offline. I think some of the work that we're doing in Westport right now is a very good example of working within a neighborhood to tackle significant vacancy, to look at how we can support existing residents with a plan, working with the community, working with the community development corporation there, and really strategically kind of looking block by block on vacancies and coming up with strategy there for citywide acquisition, receivership and components, and how to support that redevelopment piece. So the work is happening, and we are doing that in neighborhoods where we know, which aren't just impact investment area neighborhoods, which, you know, we have impact investment area neighborhoods, we have non-impact investment area neighborhoods like Westport, we have middle neighborhoods that we're working in, which is why there is kind of a focus across the city in terms of how and what tools across, you know, all of the available tools can we utilize to ensure that we're not just lifting up communities that have seen historic disinvestment and historic decline, but how can we also ensure that our stable middle neighborhoods maintain stability and see, you know, increase, and how to continue to drive that? So it's a, you know, evaluation of looking at all the different neighborhoods across the city, and what best tools can we be utilizing in conjunction with community to achieve the results that we all want to see.
I appreciate that. And one of the confounders that I think is not being talked about is the predatory nature of developers that are going into, they're holding, they're buying and holding said properties in these respective areas. And they, you know, we have loopholes within the city that are not formally addressing those issues so that we can kind of move this along. And so I would ask that, when you're thinking through how to implement this strategy, we really need to take a look at the housing operations, code enforcement, getting through to predatory developers, because there are great developers out here, but there are also predatory developers that are holding tens, 50 to hundreds of homes in these respective areas, that housing like this cannot be implemented correctly. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, we're going to go to Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a statement. I hear the word equity. I haven't seen it. Now I hear inclusionary housing. It did not work. When I ride through Broadway East and South Clifton Park and Dolly Park and Midway and Greater Greenmount, maybe you forgot the word inclusionary housing, because they were excluded. We got seniors that live next door, people live next door to houses with no roof, dirty yards, mold, squatters in the house. So the buzzword is inclusionary housing again. Well, I don't see where this bill include the people in those communities that suffered through the excluded housing. So until I see some more where it's going to benefit the people in Broadway East and South Clifton Park and Dolly Park and Midway, who live next door to toxic houses all their life, I don't see the word inclusion housing including them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes. We do have one additional council member. Councilman Bullock, the floor is yours.
They were good now, yeah. And thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chair or Councilwoman Ramos for introducing this. I will say, you know, this is something that's very critical in our city. I know that Councilman Torrance, I think also, Councilwoman McCray spoke in terms of some of our neighbors who really need that kind of push. I do respect the report that we've seen in terms of inclusionary housing and the Enterprise report, but I'll just start back from the beginning. And some of you may know that in the last term, I happened to have been on that Inclusionary Housing Board. And for many of us who sat on that board, it was heartbreaking coming to meeting after meeting when there were just waivers constantly being granted. We understand that there are challenges in terms of meeting that bottom line. We're very understanding of that, but at the same time, we really have to make a good faith effort in moving forward. The fact that we've only done a couple dozen over the lifetime of this bill is really a shame. And so I know there's some work that has to be done. I know there are some amendments. I know there's some additional conversation. I know some of the things that law and finance and housing and planning have put forward have given us something to digest, but I hope that everybody really takes this seriously in terms of what it means, not only for our city as a whole, but some of our disinvested neighborhoods, and for folks who are really looking for quality places to live, and really having a city that has inclusionary housing and mixed-income housing to provide opportunities. I know we've looked at these maps, and we've seen neighborhoods of opportunity, and we've talked about middle neighborhoods, but we really have to be rolling in the same direction with this. So again, I appreciate everybody for being here today. I really appreciate the advocates who are here, who have filled up these chambers today, because I know it's something that's very important to all of you that are here. I know there have been some developers who've also had their say, but again, we have to really work together on this. So again, I'll just stop it there. But again, thank you for all being here tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock. So we're about to go into public testimony. Before we do so, I'm going to, again, provide deference to the sponsor of the bill, so she can clean up or add in anything that she wants to add before we go into that. Just like I wanted to provide a strong distinction of inclusionary zoning versus inclusionary housing, I also want to be very clear what we're talking about here. I think I've heard the term "low-income residence." That's not 60% AMI folks. So I want to be really clear that we understand and know what we're talking about in the bill that we're talking about. I think from a 60% AMI perspective for this area, I think Councilwoman Ramos talked about it earlier, it's about $69,000 for household income.
For a family of four?
For a family of four, who can afford a rent of $1,700 a month. So when we're talking about inclusionary housing, let's understand and know, we're talking about workforce, middle-class housing. We're not talking about quote-unquote "low-income." So I want us to all be clear about this bill and about what we're talking about, because again, I think I've heard the term "low-income" used a couple times. And this bill and the modeling that we've seen from finance, from housing, and the structure of this bill does not approach that. So with that, again, we're going to go over to Councilwoman Ramos, and then we're going to turn to the community. So Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for all of your amazing, great questions, and for your patience as we've been working through this this year. Just a couple of things to mention. One is that, you know, this is one of several policies that we need for affordable housing. One, we need so much more in terms of subsidy for affordable homeownership. We need, there's so much more that we need. This is one little sliver piece of it to Councilman Torrance's point about how this fits with sort of the larger, you know, comprehensive housing strategy. This is an important one, because we don't want people excluded from living in areas where they normally would not be able to go. That's what we're trying to do here. And then that changes, you know, as the neighborhoods change. We also know that we have, you know, vacant housing crisis, and a lot of us have been working very, very diligently on that, and there's sort of more to come on those issues as well, because we have to address that crisis too. But this is really about trying to have residents who can be in areas that are usually out of reach. And then part of the amendments talk to the lower income, as the council president was alluding to, which is that when additional subsidy is available, then, you know, the developer would be required to make sure that there are units for 50% or below area median income. And we do have tools for that particular population also with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. There's always more that we need. So just one... So just wanted to clarify a couple of those points, and I do have copies of my analysis that I talked about earlier that I'll make available to the council as well. I really appreciated the discussion this evening, and I'm looking forward to continuing this discussion. We do have another work session scheduled, so look forward to being able to bring all this together so that that work session can be, can be productive. So thank you, Mr. President, and thank you colleagues for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that said, the first person I have on my list is Sharonda Huffman. Please, for the record, state your name and any affiliation. For everyone's knowledge, you can take the mask off if you're comfortable keeping it on, it's up to you.
Good evening, my name is Sharonda.
I'm so sorry, just for housekeeping purposes. So we're gonna, two minutes per testimony. Larry, are you ready?
Sharonda, come to the mic.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
One second. Larry, you ready? All right, we're ready.
Sharonda Huffman, Maryland Inclusive Housing. Good evening to all the city council members, and happy Founder's Day to Mr. Council President. My name is Sharonda Huffman, and I'm the Housing Director of Maryland Inclusive Housing. I have submitted a position letter regarding this bill. MIH, Maryland Inclusive Housing, was established to help people with intellectual and other developmental disabilities successfully assess and maintain inclusive, affordable, accessible housing of their choice. To this end, MIH set up a housing committee around the state, including one in Baltimore City. MIH urges you to support the Baltimore City Council Bill 220195 with amendments. To that end, we also support the re-establishment of an Inclusionary Housing Board that includes someone who has knowledge of disability matters to make determinations on a fee and lieu request if this is kept in this legislation. We also support the city's collaboration with the Baltimore Housing Authority to explore project-based vouchers, including those for non-elderly disabled recipients. Please note, many of my clients have income at 15% of AMI, so there is a need for housing for persons with very low income. Further, I'm also a former employee of the city in both the Department of Housing and Community Development and the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. Most importantly, I am a mother of an adult with an intellectual and developmental disability. I know firsthand the lack of planning by the city for persons with disabilities under the age of 62. I also ask, there been a risk assessment done on the liability of consistent neglect of the disability community. Why are we, why did the Affordable Housing Law sunset to begin with? This legislation is just one tool in the toolbox to make housing equity a reality in the city of Baltimore. Going forward, I hope the Scott administration and this city council will work collaboratively with advocates in this room to create a comprehensive housing plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, is it appropriate that I say Happy Centennial?
Thank you very much.
Or Happy Centennial?
About the Sigma Gamma Rho Society Incorporated.
I love it. Happy Centennial. Next on my list is Hugh Trung, Community Development Network of Maryland. I believe you are online. Do we see? Trung, T-R-U-O-N-G.
H-I-U.
Okay, while we're looking, Anika Dunbar Gronk.
She also online? Anika?
Oh, Anika, Anika.
Anika.
All right. She's in the other room. Anika, here she comes. All right, next after Anika, we got Monica Braxton. Is Monica in the room? You in the room? No, wait, we're gonna do Anika first. Then we have Tyrone Boos. We see Mr. Tyrone. Matt Hill, is Matt in the room? Matt's in the room. And then we're gonna be followed by David Prater in that order. Is David in the room? Is David online? No? All right. So, no, we're gonna go to Anika, and then we'll go to Prater. Prater, David Prater. All right, okay, that's fine. We're gonna go to Anika. The floor is yours, two minutes.
Thank you so much. Good evening, and thank you to the council and to everyone who's gathered in support of this bill tonight. My name is Anika Dunbar Gronk. I'm an attorney with the Fair Housing and Community Development Project of the Lawyers' Committee for Civil Rights Under Law, which is a national civil rights organization, and I'm also a member of the Steering Committee for Baltimore Renters United. I am testifying tonight to urge the council to issue a favorable report on this bill as currently amended, and I want to focus on three major points as to why. The first is that the Fair, is on the Fair Housing Act's prohibition of the perpetuation of segregation. 42 U.S.C. 3604A makes it illegal for anyone to engage in discriminatory policies or practices that make unavailable or deny a dwelling to any person because of race or color, and under the law discriminatory effects include the perpetuation of segregation. Since the city committed to, in its 2020 analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, to reform the inclusionary housing law so that it more effectively produces affordable housing opportunities, there's clear evidence that the city is aware of both, that both the prior inclusionary housing law and the lack of an inclusionary housing law right now creates a barrier to fair housing choice and perpetuate segregation, and so the longer that the city remains without an effective inclusionary housing law, the longer the city leaves itself open to fair housing litigation. The second point that I want to make is that the city does have a duty to affirmatively further fair housing. I'm gonna echo the National Fair Housing Alliance's written testimony, but Baltimore City, as a recipient of HUD funds, has a duty to affirmatively further fair housing and passing an effective inclusionary housing bill as a part of that duty. And the third is the necessity for affirmative fair housing marketing to members of protected classes that are least likely to rent. I know there's been some resistance to this requirement, but I drafted and submitted a legal memorandum to Councilmember Ramos that I'm happy to share with any members here that addresses how affirmative marketing to those least likely to apply is extremely standard under HUD guidelines, and if done right, has, there are no issues with federal nondiscrimination requirements. So I thank you, I thank you all for considering this bill, and I look forward to hearing how this goes.
Thank you so much. Do we have the Hugh Trung? Do you see him? You don't see him? Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on. You can pull the mic down a little bit if you want to.
Good evening, esteemed council members. My name is Monica Braxton, and I serve on the Baltimore Regional Partnership Client Advisory Board. I'm a, I am a member of this community and a participant of BRHP Housing Vouching Program. I know firsthand the life-changing impact of having access to affordable and safe housing. Before becoming a BRHP participant, my two daughters and I lived in a one-bedroom apartment that was congested and located within a neighborhood that was unsafe, uncomfortable, and mentally taxing. I now have a two-bedroom apartment that is safe, affordable, and provides a solid foundation to build a better life for me and my family. Affordable housing has given us the opportunity to breathe again, to dream bigger, and to a focus on achieving more goals. The impact of building on inclusionary Baltimore goes beyond housing. Investing in the production of affordable housing means investing in our community's health, education, economic development, and safety. Having stable and safe housing has had a positive influence on my children's academic performance, and has allowed me to be more involved with that educational by reducing the need to work multiple jobs to make ends meet. And more importantly, it reduces the need for unwanted moves that lead to a lot of school changes. Council Bill 22-0195 may not be the cure to be, to the affordable housing shortage and housing insecurity crisis our city is facing, but it is impossible to create, to create an effective and meaningful solution without it. It is, it is important to provide more affordable housing options for families and include us in the new developments. We are the heartbeat of this city, and providing more options that could give our children a safe place to grow and thrive will not only benefit this city for generations to come. On behalf of BRHP and Inclusionary Housing Coalition, I urge you to vote in favor of Council Bill 22-0195, 0195, and support a more inclusionary Baltimore.
Thank you, Ms. Braxton. Next, we got Mr. Boos.
Hello, councilmen, President City Council and Councilwoman. Before I get started, I wanted to first thank Councilwoman Ramos for her tireless efforts on behalf of working, normal working-class people, not just the affluent, okay? And I also want to say that people that make $69,000 a year are people too, less, people that make less than $69,000 are people too, okay? And there are plenty of people that work, some of them work two jobs, some, both spouses work, they work less, they make less than $69,000 a year. That's considered poor to a lot of those people, they'd be surprised. But as far as the housing market in Baltimore right now, that is poor if you want decent housing, okay? My daughter makes fairly decent money, she can't afford these houses that they're building right now, okay? She's a professional, and so is my son. And this is a, I support this bill because it's a fundamental issue of fairness, all right? Those people that I talked about that makes under $69,000 a year, they pay these subsidies to developers as well, and they're taxed, they also pay high water bills, you know, and other things that contribute to the well-being of this city, okay? If you're just gonna look out for the affluent people, and you can't even get a minority of the, of this funding, that it's only gonna benefit the affluent. If you can't just get a minority of this funding to some other deserving, hard-working people in Baltimore, it's nothing more than corporate welfare, okay? And if they can't handle this, look, my organization's homes, all right? Go to www.baltimorenumberfourhomes.org, and we will show you how we can do housing, whole blocks of housing at a time, using minority contractors with jobs and jobs training and under $1,000 for the mortgage. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Boos. Next up, we have Matt Hill, Public Justice Center.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Matt Hill, Public Justice Center, is also part of the Inclusionary Housing Coalition supporting the bill. I want to make this very concrete for a moment. I thought Ms. Lewis's testimony was very important. There's a foot, some changes that people are proposing to weaken the bill, and if you change it from 60% of area median income up to 80% of area median income, folks like Ms. Lewis who have a voucher are not gonna be able to access those units. So Council President, your point is well-taken. This isn't about really low-income housing, and yet it is, because if you stay at 60% of area median income, you're gonna still allow folks with vouchers to get into those units. If you go higher, the rent for the voucher will not cover that rent. Secondly, same with the affirmative marketing requirements. Very important for folks, for these developers to reach out to folks with vouchers and say, "Look, we want you in our building." And then those developers need to report each year on how many folks with vouchers, with other protected classes, are in those buildings. If you weaken those requirements, it's gonna defeat the purpose of the bill. So those are really important to us. Bigger picture, I want to just come back to another point that was raised, which is kind of why can't Baltimore have nice things? Councilman Dorsey and Cohen raised important points, density, parking, these seem to be something that developers want in every other jurisdiction that does this. Why not Baltimore? You have successful inclusionary laws in Pittsburgh, Philadelphia, Chicago, DC, Montgomery, many others that are more stringent than what Councilmember Ramos has proposed. In Chicago, they require 20% of the units to be affordable. In Pittsburgh, they require even deeper affordability than in Council Ramos's bill. So other jurisdictions have made this work, Baltimore can do the same. Instead, right now, we gave residential rental developers $38 million in tax subsidies in FY '22 alone. That is subsidizing segregation, and it is subsidizing separate and unequal in our city, and it needs to end. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Next up, Mr. Prater.
He's online.
You online? Raise your hand if you are. You see him? Mr. Prater, you should be unmuted. Please state your name for the record and your affiliation. Mr. Prater, are you still there? Mr. Prater, if you can hear us, we cannot hear you. You're unmuted, Mr. Prater. Okay, we're gonna move on.
Can I hear, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have two minutes, Mr. Prater.
All right, thank you. My name is David Prater. I'm a managing attorney at Disability Rights Maryland, testifying in support of the legislation with amendments. I think the one point that I wanted to address in my testimony this evening related to this deep level of affordability for low-income families, this is actually something that the city has done successfully in the past by connecting these major subsidies that it provides to developers with a requirement to accept project-based vouchers from the housing authority. This was part of a hallmark, or a landmark settlement with the city and Housing Authority of Baltimore City related to affordable housing for people with disabilities that resulted in 500 additional units of new construction and substantially renovated housing for people with disabilities. This legislation can do that by making it a condition of the receipt of a major public subsidy to apply for any existing solicitation from these, from the Housing Authority of Baltimore City or other operator of those deep housing subsidies. So I just want to highlight that, that there is an opportunity here to reach that level of deep affordability by requiring developers to apply for those open subsidies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we're gonna go to Holly Ward. After Holly, we have Char McCreedy, Betty Bland Thomas, Maureen Daly, and then Tisha Guthrie. So Ms. Ward, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. I am Ms. Howard.
Ms. Ward, Ms. Ward, Ms. Ward, if you could pull the mic down a little bit.
Okay, is that better?
That's perfect.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Holly Ward. I'm a political leader with 1199SEIU. I reside in the Bella Edison Neighborhood in District 14. I am a geriatric nursing assistant at Cheswick MultiCare Center for six years. Previously, I was a security guard for 18 years. I rely on public transportation to get me to work, yet if I had the ability to live closer to work, it would cut my transit time and allow me more time to tend to my personal needs. I have recently had to move abruptly because my property manager raised my rent for a unit that had continuous problems with raw sewage backing up into my home. Through that experience, I found it hard to find affordable housing close to my job. With 220195, Baltimore has a chance to break with development processes that subsidize segregation. It needs to create a more equitable, integrated future. For this policy to be effective, it must serve everyday working people who are vulnerable to experience I went through. Do not reduce the very limited affordability requirements we need. Rental units for family of three that earn below $62,400, which allows frontline workers like myself and my coworkers, and persons who use vouchers, access to affordable units. Raising this threshold to 80% AMI will place those units beyond reach to many frontline workers and voucher holders. Additionally, new developments should maintain strong affirmative marketing with Black families like myself, who are often excluded from the benefits of new developments. We must hold developers accountable for ensuring there is equal and accessible units. It is simply shameful that in the birthplace of redlining, the city of Baltimore continues to subsidize segregation. On behalf of over 5,000 1199 union members in Baltimore, I implore you to issue a favorable favorable community report on Council Bill 220195 with sponsor amendments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Good evening. My name is Charmetta Char McCreedy. I'm the Executive Director of Citizens Planning and Housing Association, CPHA, proudly headquartered here in Baltimore City. Thank you, City Council, City Council President, and Councilwoman Ramos. CPHA is an 82-year-old community engagement nonprofit organization that believes in strong communities and works to build strength and unity among diverse communities in Baltimore, in the Baltimore region. CPHA is a member of the 2022 Inclusionary Housing Coalition. We are one of 17 organizations working collaboratively to pass an effective inclusionary housing law in Baltimore City. Most of those, excuse me, most of the organizations are represented here today. The people that you see in orange, the people that you see in yellow... The people that you see in orange, the people that you see in yellow, pretty much this whole space is members of the Inclusionary Housing Coalition or their supporters. Most of the, so the Inclusionary Housing Coalition sees inclusionary housing as one tool. That is very important. We've been listening today, it's one tool. It's a powerful tool. Suppose that there's a solid law that removes loopholes, coupled with clear regulations, transparency, and oversight. In that case, this can be a very impactful way to improve housing conditions for many Baltimoreans now and into the future. You should look at inclusionary housing as a vital tool that can be used to create a win-win for all parties involved. Neighborhood disinvestment and housing disparities result from historical federal, state, and local race-based policies. The first inclusionary policies were explicitly intended to reduce racial and economic segregation at the neighborhood level. Baltimore City can use inclusionary housing as a tool. Use it as a tool to create more affordable housing. Use it to promote mixed-income neighborhoods. Use it to reduce gentrification and displacement linked to market rate development. Use it to incentivize new development, including affordable units as set aside benefits. Use it to anticipate significant development in the coming years, and the way you ensure that future development is inclusive. Use it as an inexpensive way to demonstrate that the city is affirmatively furthering fair housing. Use it to improve livelihoods for low-to-modern-income students, single parents, chosen families, seniors, individuals with disabilities, immigrants, LGBTQ+, and the BIPOC communities. Use it to address housing instability. Put the people over profit. I guarantee you will get a return on investment. Everyone wants to live in clean, safe, affordable housing, rich in amenities. We all want an equitable Baltimore that is thriving. I implore you to find a way to make inclusionary housing work in Baltimore. I also say that this is not a panacea to fix all the problems. So, as I've listened to everyone today, this bill may not fit every single neighborhood, but it's a start. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. McCready. Next up, we're going to Betty Blain Thomas. Betty Blain Thomas?
Yes.
How are you doing today?
I'm good, I'm good. Hi, Council. President Mosby, I appreciate a lot of what you said earlier today. I like those questions. They were right on point. I like a lot of the questions that have been shared today. Ms. Porter, you know, your neighborhood should surely be used as an example of what can be done when community and developers come to the table for community benefits. You know, our city has a long racial history of injustice. I do feel this bill very strongly will be a tool to begin to amend that. I'll give you an example. I'm so sorry to the young lady who spoke earlier, it's not here. She almost brought tears to my eyes. But I can share with you that in my community, because of the development that has occurred, there are not many people like me. And unfortunately, as a result of that, many of the people like me in my community that are still there, some are homeowners, some are living in affordable units, are not feeling a part of the community that they have lived most of their lives and have struggled with. I think this bill would definitely help, as it's been said, to add a tool. Another example I want to share, and I think the Deputy Mayor can help me with that. Emphasis has been made to allow a cat cafe to be in a luxury apartment, and yet I cannot get some of my seniors who are looking for affordable units to be able to live in a neighborhood that they spend over 50 years of their life. They're being outpriced of their own home. Gentrification is a tool of great displacement. It does not have a tool of diversity. This bill is a tool towards that. Deputy Mayor, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but as I thought about my situation, I thought about how I stood up to, to say to this committee today, "Let's do something. Let's not continue to allow $38 million to go for luxury development and only develop, and as I heard, in a couple of years, 38 affordable units." You know, we have to do better. Ms. Kennedy, I know your department is working hard. I had the pleasure of seeing her again, I haven't seen her for years, and she is a lady, I do feel, who has the ability to help make changes. But I will say to this committee in closing, if you want this to work, then put the people from the different states that have this policy that show you how it works. If we're still using our own thinking and thinking, it can't work because we're putting more priority on money than we are on the quality of life for the people who have not the ability to move out of Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Next up, we have Maureen Daly. After Ms. Daly, we have Tisha Guthrie, and then we have Diane Gluber. So, Ms. Daly, if you could start.
Good evening. Thank you, City Council, City Council President, Councilwoman Ramos. I'm Maureen Daly. I'm a resident of Baltimore City. I live at 3104 Barclay Street. I'm speaking today on behalf of Beyond the Boundaries, a program of the Catholic Archdiocese of Baltimore. Beyond the Boundaries is a founding organization of the Inclusionary Housing Coalition. I'm also speaking on behalf of St. Vincent de Paul Parish, located at 120 North Front Street. Our parish is famous for its care for the poor and unhoused, especially our hospitality in our park at Fayette Street and Fallsway. Beyond the Boundaries was founded after the publication of David Brusck's 1995 book, Baltimore Unbound: A Strategy for Regional Renewal, which examined the systemic racism related to housing in the Baltimore region. In response to Baltimore Unbound, the Archdiocese founded Beyond the Boundaries in 1996 to raise awareness of systemic racism and to advocate for affordable housing in economically and racially diverse communities. Catholics throughout the Archdiocese gathered to discuss racial segregation and limited economic opportunity in the Baltimore region. Since 1996, we have advocated for inclusionary housing as one way to achieve racial and economic diversity, and thus to provide greater opportunity for all. In partnership with Bridge Maryland Incorporated and Citizens Housing and Planning Association, we have worked on each inclusionary housing initiative since 2003. As a representative of Beyond the Boundaries, I served on the highly ineffective Inclusionary Housing Board. We were actively involved in advocating for inclusionary housing legislation and reform in 2003, 2007, 2014, 2017, 2019, and in the past year meeting every week since February. We are disappointed that the City Council allowed the inclusionary housing legislation to sunset without the needed reforms. We are pleased to have a hearing on this important legislation. Beyond the Boundaries and its 300 members in the Baltimore region call on the City Council to rapidly put in place an effective inclusionary housing law. We thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of City Council Inclusionary Housing Bill 220195 with amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tisha Guthrie. Tisha Guthrie?
Good evening. Right off, I'm going to ask your indulgence, as I have legal blindness, and so I'm going to be reading my testimony, but I ask for your indulgence.
You have it.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President, and the broader Council, and especially Councilwoman Odette Ramos. I stand in solidarity with the rich volume of organizations and coalitions insisting that the Inclusionary Housing Bill that has expired be reinstated and be deemed stronger. The promise, the promise of Baltimore has been put on hold far too long. Council Bill 22-0195 is one mechanism of many tools that is necessary, pardon me, that is necessary to actualize Mayor Scott's campaign commitment and promise to prioritize racial equity and to address the generational violence of long-term, locally, state, and federally sanctioned racial discrimination housing practices, acknowledging the history is facile, without an intentional strategy and effort to redress the very violence that this system has perpetuated. So, who benefits? We heard initially from quite a few individuals who would benefit from this inclusionary, a robust inclusionary housing law. We have teachers assistants, we have certified nursing assistants, we have daycare providers, we also have community health workers, social workers, and home healthcare workers. Maryland-owned Montgomery County has, since 1976, had a functional inclusionary housing ordinance. Residents who have endured and invested in the future of Baltimore deserve to partake in the growing development after decades of funds coming from very taxpayers who are, who have been excluded from Baltimore's new day of development. In this country, those of African ancestry have lived through generations of de juro and de facto discriminatory housing policies, which have been marginalizing and intentionally impede the growth of generational wealth. This country's current wealth imbalance is a result of numerous strategies being engaged reciprocally, reciprocally. Justice, if justice is our intention, a comprehensive approach in our city to redress this is our only hope. So, I plead, and I urge, the City Council to vote favorably for IH. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Guthrie. Next up, we have Diane Glaber.
Good evening, Councilpeople. You heard from my brilliant colleague, Annika, just a little while ago. My name is Diane Glaber. I am the Director of Fair Housing and Community Development at the Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights Under Law, and I am also a Baltimore resident. In addition, I've set up inclusionary housing programs nationwide, everywhere from New Orleans to Santa Monica, and there are, I very much support the bill. However, I have found significant flaws in the feasibility analysis, and full disclosure, I worked for Enterprise for eight years. So, a few of the flaws we found, as was mentioned previously, is, number one, the 10% set-aside requirement contemplated in this report is far too low. I set up policies across the country at 20%, most, I would say, most are 20%, some are 15, and some are highest 25%. And of those at 20% and 25%, they're affordable to people making 60% of median or below, not 80%. There were some flaws in some of the bonuses that could help bring down the AMI. For example, density bonuses are so important, and there are study after study that show how effective they are in reducing the cost and increasing profit to developers. Reducing building permit fees, expedited permitting is used all over California. Donated land, this would all subsidize the development and allow for units targeting the lower, lower income Black and Brown families who have been traditionally excluded from these housing opportunities in Baltimore, as well as other places. The applicability right now of 30 units for working, for buildings that are seeking major public subsidy without really identifying that subsidy will not bring nearly enough units. For example, DC and New Orleans allow, require inclusionary zoning for, inclusionary housing for 10%, 10 units and more, and almost every other jurisdiction is 20 or more. I'm not sure where 30 came from, but that will bring in so few units that it will not make a dent like the 37 units that have created elsewhere in the last few years. When I looked at the people that participated in the study, I was surprised to find no local nonprofit housing developers. You know, why is that? We have Homes for America, one of the best nonprofit developers in the country, in our backyard with an executive director who lives in Baltimore. Episcopal housing corporations doing great things around the, around the city, yet they weren't brought in. The one developer, nonprofit developer that was brought in is the community's builders. They're Boston-based with tens of millions of dollars in revenue every year, and they should not be telling the citizens of Baltimore what makes sense for inclusionary housing.
Ms. Glaber, if you could start to wrap up.
Okay. Finally, the in-Lufee option, in my opinion, is not an option at all, because it will fail to affirmatively further fair housing, because off-site units are not going to be created in my neighborhood, Mount Washington, or Roland Park, or Bolton Hill. They will be in lower-income communities where there's the least resistance to affordable housing, so that should not be an option. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. They were very good points. Next up, we have Lorraine Aricat. And please correct the pronunciation of your name if I have bouch.
Thank you, Councilmembers. My name is Lorraine Aricat. I'm a resident of Hollins Market neighborhood in southwest Baltimore in District 9. As a senior policy analyst with 1199SEIU, we have been working with the Inclusionary Housing Coalition, a broad group of organizations across the city representing thousands who are directly impacted by the ongoing housing crisis. Affordable housing is worker justice. Affordable housing is health care. Affordable housing is racial justice. Council Bill 220195 with Councilwoman Ramos's amendments affirmatively furthers fair housing law. As Baltimore residents, I'm sure we are all familiar with the term "the white L" coined by Dr. Lawrence Brown. But we cannot simply accept this as status quo in Baltimore City any longer. As a recent graduate of University of Maryland and Johns Hopkins, I know how universities and medical institutions play a pivotal role in attracting big developers to cater to the transitional population of students and young professionals, all while they continue to exclude the essential predominantly Black and Brown workers making below $60,000 annually, who are sweeping floors, cooking meals, cleaning rooms, and are the backbone of these very institutions. I urge you to not water down this bill by limiting the geographic scope to simply harbor East and Downtown, or by increasing the affordability requirement. Instead, ensure that everyday working people in Baltimore can finally benefit from developers receiving public subsidies. Standing on the shoulders of housing justice advocates who endured housing discrimination, redlining, and segregation, I urge Baltimore City leadership to adopt equally aggressive policies to build a more equitable future. By issuing a favorable report of Council Bill 220195 with sponsor amendments, we are one step closer to that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aricat. Next up, we have Claudia Wilson-Randle.
Good evening, Council President and members of the City Council, and I want to thank Councilwoman Ramos for bringing this important bill forward. My name is Claudia Wilson-Randle. I'm the current Executive Director of the Community Development Network of Maryland. We have about 40 members of our association who are community-based nonprofits, mission-based developers, and community development professionals across the city. We are strongly in favor of inclusionary housing, and we are part of the Inclusionary Housing Coalition. I want to acknowledge all of the members of the Coalition who spoke before me. I can't tell you how long and hard many of them have been in this work, and have been working tirelessly to strengthen Baltimore and Baltimore neighborhoods. Inclusionary housing is one tool that can help address our city's most urgent challenges: public safety, economic development, and health of our citizens. public safety, economic development, and health of our citizens. Not only is there an overall shortage of safe and affordable rental homes, but there are rarely located in high-opportunity neighborhoods that have quality schools, parks, reliable transit, and proximity to jobs and services. Passing this law can lead to less stress, better mental health for our neighborhoods, and overall, better overall city health. Also, with a larger inventory of newly-built affordable apartments, we can reduce the likelihood that our neighbors are dealing with environmental issues such as pests, mold, lead paint, and exposure for the sake, and lead paint exposure. I just want to also comment on a few of the amendments that were brought forward. Please don't change the affordability required. This is a very reasonable standard. We've seen other cities across the country meet this standard, under $62,000 for a family of three. That 60% of AMI is critical. Please maintain some strong oversight and accountability. I know that the discussion of the Inclusionary Housing Board of doing away with that was discussed, but we need some oversight and accountability in this work. It's critical, and it's critical for us to see it get done, not in 30 years. I, how do we have an impact for the 7th grader today? We gotta make a better city for them. We need a city with opportunity. Opportunity starts at home, where you live. Please, no more fees in lieu, loopholes so people can get by this. Let's stop this. And the other piece of this legislation, it's one tool. It's not, it's not every tool. It's not every neighborhood. Please also maintain a strong, affordable, affirmative marketing. That is critical. I'm not clear why, I've heard lots of excuses about why that can't be done, but we've had, we've had a voucher list that's closed. Let's start there. There's more than enough. I'm gonna leave it there, and thank you all this evening for having us, and appreciate your attention to this matter.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Randle. Next up, on my list, I have Reverend Dr. Marlon Tillman.
Good evening, Council. Again, Reverend Dr. Marlon Tillman with Bridge Maryland Incorporated. I am the Criminal Justice Work Group Chair and a good friend of Ramos. I really can't add more to what you've already received from my written testimony, except I've learned a lot from you tonight. I learned a whole lot from you tonight, and I appreciate what I've learned. And so what I really want to share with you tonight is something that we all need to remember, and that is not less, not, a wise man once said, not, not, do not let perfect get in the way of good. Don't let perfect get in the way of good. This bill has the opportunity of changing a lot of lives in this moment. If we move from this moment, we can then continue to make other changes that impact lives into the future. But we gotta start somewhere. We can't say that just because it doesn't hit your community in this moment, that it's not going to hit your community in the moment. And so I just ask that you do not let perfect get in the way of good, because you can make a difference by making this legislation, which is literally a civil rights issue, come to pass if you simply do something, and do it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Dr. Next up, is Ms. Namdi here? I didn't see her.
Is she online?
Ms. Namdi, are you online? She is? If you could raise your hand so we could quickly find you, and then, you got her, unmute Ms. Namdi, can you hear us? Can you hear us, Ms. Namdi? If so, we cannot hear you yet. Is she unmuted? Ms. Namdi? You're unmuted. Can you, if you can hear me? I cannot hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear. The floor is yours.
All right. My name is Nika Namdi. I'm the creator of Fight Light Be More and the co-creator of the Stop Oppressive Seizures Fund. Both organizations were founded to address racist housing and community development policies and practices in Baltimore and beyond. Here are a few quick points I want to make about the inclusionary housing legislation that we are addressing tonight. One, how can an inclusionary housing bill enable mixed-income communities if people who make less than 60% of AMI are being, are going to be excluded? It won't. More than 40% of Baltimore households make less than 60% of AMI. Why is the focus on the needs of the market and developers, not the needs of the people? It just doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. What does housing insecurity cost the city? I bet you it costs more than $9 million over 10 years. In fact, homelessness prevention and support in fiscal, in this fiscal year alone was budgeted at $8 million, and in the previous years, it was $500,000 per year. So we know $9 million is a drop in the bucket. What makes folks think that everyone wants to live in those core neighborhoods? Honestly, we don't. We want our communities where we live to have affordable and quality housing development options. How can the city trust the very real estate development community who helped wreck the Black Butterfly in the first place? The city shouldn't. Strong oversight of any inclusionary housing bill is needed. City Council Bill 22-0195 with sponsored, with the sponsor amendment should receive a favorable vote. Also, it's important to note that we can, if the city would just do the disparity study necessary to prove in a legally sufficient manager, manner, what we already know, racial bias causes disparate impact in housing and community development policy. Completing these studies will enable policy to be written in a legal manner to repair the damage done specifically to black households.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Namdi, for that.
Thank you.
Next, we're gonna go to Reverend Brian Mary.
Good evening. Brian Mary.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my testimony is that we've been here before. Inclusionary housing demands were made. Dr. Tillman and I got on this highway somewhere in the neighborhood of 2016, 2017. Ms. Daly talked about us doing this since 2003. Our predecessor, David Casey, worked on this. Dr. Tillman and I led Bridge, Maryland for close to five years. We've moved on, and here we are. Simple, small percentages were asked for inclusionary housing in order to receive one of the largest TIFs in the history of this country. As two of us from Bridge, Maryland, worked with the citizen-appointed activist group, we met with all of the Sagamore developers for several weeks to no avail. Why? We can hide behind the fact that the city couldn't assist in financing the subsidy money for building inclusionary housing all we want, but the bottom line is, they wanted to push this water-down bill through because the elections were just around the corner for this city. The powers that be feared that if most of you were in the council at that time, there would be no way this bill, as it has existed, would have ever seen the light of day. There are maybe three council people. Brother Stokes, I remember you. Brother Dorsey, I think, was around. I can't even remember who else was here, but you guys were young guns at the time, and there would be no way this bill would have existed as it is and seen the light of day. Well, now, you anticipated young guns are here, and I don't know anybody, I have a lot of circles that I trap, my wife and myself travel in, and I don't know anybody that lives in Port Covington, basically because they can't afford it. That means, in the end, inclusionary affordable housing didn't happen because there was never really an honest intention to do the work to make it happen. And so, the anticipation that the council in its entirety would do the right thing is here upon you right now. Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Brother Mosby, you were a senator at the time. You weren't even in this room, but the time is now. That means, that means, many within the Coalition have cited data that more than justifies a favorable report for passing this legislation. My question is simple. Can we do it the right way this time? My understanding is that there are numerous developers lined up with applications to build in this city, and we're not so clueless that we don't understand that there are big and small building projects. We get that. But what we are saying is if, if for building big projects, they are requesting big TIFs, then the contract must have ironclad inclusionary and affordable housing provisions, period. These provisions must be enforceable, and there should be consequences for violating them. Public servants, whether they're city council people or in the federal government, public servants all have two basic jobs: constituent services and passing sensible policies to improve the quality of life. In this matter, it's time for this council to put some receipts on the table. I know many of you, and I pray that you will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna go to the folks who showed up today and signed up. There's only a couple names as it relates to people who signed up in person and did not sign up online. So if I call your name, if we've missed it, it's not an opportunity to speak a second time, it's just that unfortunately, we missed it. I think the first name I have is Denise Jones-Dorsey.
Council President Mosby and members of the Committee of the Whole, I am Denise Jones-Dorsey. I reside at 5439 Remo Avenue, ZIP Code 21206. I am represented very proudly by Councilwoman Danielle McCray. Tonight, I'm here in two hats. I am the Chair of SHARE Baltimore Incorporated, which is a network of community land trusts that are building houses for homeownership in middle, I understand, middle neighborhood in communities. But tonight, I'm speaking to you as a member of the Baltimore chapter of the NAACP Housing Committee. Councilpeople, you see, we don't believe that the work that the community land trust is doing is in conflict with an inclusionary housing strategy, and we are happy that you all are working as the Committee of the Whole, because housing, mixed income, environmentally decent housing requires a collective set of strategies to work out these thorny challenges that I heard about tonight. Let me read this testimony, and then I'll close out. In my capacity as member of the Baltimore chapter of the NAACP Housing Committee, I offer this testimony to urge your favorable vote on Council Bill to end, mercy, to end housing discrimination based on source income. The Baltimore chapter of the NAACP has been working for over 100 years to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic quality of all citizens, and we believe that access to decent, safe, environmentally appropriate, affordable housing is the cornerstone upon which all of these are based. Allowing the inclusionary housing law to expire weakens this cornerstone and cements Baltimore's long and disgraceful history of racial and economic segregation. In order to reverse this state of affairs, we need to expeditiously pass Bill 220195 to create homes for black and brown folks. And you heard earlier that we're talking about folks who work in this city, at our institutions, who actually work for government, who are legacy residents who have held up Baltimore all of these years. So you all have my testimony in front of you, but what I would like to do is emphasize the following. One, this bill should serve people 60% AMI and below. In another conversation, and I'm pissed that HABC is not here, you all need to work with that authority to find out what they are doing for people 30% AMI and below. I understand that the Housing Authority is a separate entity similar to the Maryland Stadium Authority and has powers that they could exercise to support this government achieving that goal. Moving right along. I believe that it is important for the council people to also recognize that the big developers, the big seven, I call them, who are giving you all all of these numbers and datas for why they're not developing are lying. I remember, I've been here long enough to remember when Canton was a brownfield. Now, it's a top-shelf community. I say that because West Baltimore is going to be developed. Those people who are holding land, their intention is to develop MFDs because of transit-oriented development. I'm gonna close here. I urge you all to work very hard to close all of the questions and challenges that you all discussed regarding this legislation, but pass this legislation. You want to pass it because each and every neighborhood in Baltimore, including northeast Baltimore, will be seen for, by developers to do MFDs of the luxury model. I'm gonna stop right there. Thank you all for your intention very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones-Dorsey. Next up, we have Doug Schmidt.
Sure. Thank you.
Pretty hard to follow that. President Mosby and councilmembers, I'm Doug Schmidt, Principal of Workshop Development. As a local developer and lifelong Baltimorean, I've been committed to attracting investment, creating jobs and tax base, and building projects that benefit our citizens and visitors. In both my private and nonprofit work, improving housing options has been a personal focus. As an industry, we agree that quality affordable housing is critical to our city's success. There is no disagreement that the need is real and should be addressed. But what we are talking about today is the actual effect of the proposed bill and its amendments. What's proposed is a massive burden on market-rate housing projects. The most obvious concern is the financial impact of reduced rent units. Based on our estimates, many millions of dollars of value will be lost even for smaller projects, and I'm happy, Councilwoman, to talk about your $90,000 example and what it actually means for a project. The result will be that most project returns will be crushed, buildings will not be built, and Baltimore will suffer even less new capital infusions. That's why we are opposed to the bill in its current form. This continuing problem with our city's negative growth is the reason the high-performance tax credit was created. Every leader recognizes that Baltimore's tax rate, double the surrounding jurisdictions, is a gigantic impediment to a robust economy. In fact, if you look at the city's budget, almost everyone is getting a tax credit to mitigate this problem. Homeowners, homesteaders, elderly public employees, new projects, et cetera, require some relief. For new development projects, a five- or 10-year tax credit does not fully compensate for the disparity of the double tax rate over the building's useful life. The unfortunate truth is this, quote, "major public subsidy" is not a windfall that can be used to pay for inclusionary units. Even with tax credits and Even with tax credits and without proposed unit, inclusionary costs, development is currently financially feasible in only a few neighborhoods. This is one of the reasons Baltimore has vastly underperformed its peer cities in adding apartment units of all types, fourth worst of the top 30 cities of the last 20 years. The idea that there are plenty of cranes in the sky and development will always happen is not true. The perception that Baltimore City is a highly profitable place to build is also not correct. It's sad how few national developers invest here, and that most of the large Baltimore-based real estate firms have refocused their investments outside of Baltimore. From the research I have done, even Baltimore City and state and Maryland pension funds do not invest their real estate allocations in Baltimore City. Better returns can be found in many other cities where the economies are dynamic, businesses are expanding, and job growth is strong. The bill as proposed makes this problem worse. For those of us who loyally remain here, it's increasingly difficult to overcome the obstacles to make projects work in Baltimore. We are not the only ones saying this. The city's own consultant agrees. The Enterprise Report commissioned by DHCD provides a great foundation for this work. In addition to costs, there are other issues of timing, compliance, operations, term, and others that require a more thorough discussion. We are here today offering to add our expertise and understanding of development, construction, finance, and capital markets towards the goal of creating a smart inclusionary program for Baltimore. There is an inclusionary housing policy that can produce more units, but striking the balance is complex. This has to be a collaborative effort. We look forward to working and joining the administration, city council advocates, and Enterprise to get the inclusionary housing bill right. Please include us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Bill Gooden.
First, I just wanna say good evening to everybody and thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. First, I just wanna say good evening to everybody. Thank you for this opportunity. I support inclusion housing, right? My problem is that I'm like Brother Stokes in terms of the exclusion, right? Because I think that if you got a man and a woman, and they're making $40,000 a year, taking care of a family, they should not be included of having the opportunity to get a decent housing. Because they paying taxes too. And them taxes is going to them developers. So, you know, why would you exclude somebody that's paying money, but because they're not making a certain amount, we gonna say they not benefit, or they can't be rewarded to have a better housing? I cannot accept that, right? Now, I'm gonna close with this because it's a lot that I don't know, but I understand what exclusion is, right? Exclusion is like, years ago, everybody could afford a water bill. But today, everybody can't, right? You know, when you work for the city, again, I'm talking about exclusion, in exclusion. When you work for the city, but you had to work 25 years to get a pension, but then some of y'all say, let's get a pension eight years. That's not exclusion, that's exclusion, right? So I'm saying, the housing initiative, the how, this is good, but I'm saying, include people that really wants to do better. It's not like people that's out there that's not trying to do nothing. I'm talking about people that's been working hard, all their life, trying to raise a family, but then they don't have an opportunity to have a decent housing. So that's not inclusion. I'm saying, let's include those who wants to do better. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next up on our list is Chris Infume.
All right. Good evening, President Mosby and distinguished members of the council. My name is Chris Infume, and my company is developing over 1,000 high-quality workforce and affordable housing units in the DMV region, the majority of which are here in Baltimore. We have several projects on the west side, including the Howard Street Corridor and Pennsylvania Avenue, and we are one of the first developers to build a major project in Highland Town, a middle-income neighborhood, a middle neighborhood, as Councilwoman mentioned earlier. We are also building permanent supportive housing at 30% AMI in historic Anacostia, DC, an area that is 92% African-American. We are focused almost specifically on neighborhoods that haven't traditionally seen investment, and the majority of our work takes place in areas most in need of housing with people that look like me. Affordable mixed-income housing is critically important, and it's at the core of our business. I'm here today because the inclusionary housing bill, as currently drafted, will unfortunately have unintended and material negative effects on Baltimore's economy. Real estate is the largest contributor to Baltimore's tax base. As currently drafted, this bill will lead to less projects being built, meaning less tax revenue and less money to fund important social programs and impact-based initiatives in the city. As the Enterprise Report stated, with rental rates where they currently are, it is not feasible for market-rate projects to provide inclusionary housing units without a source to offset the cost. This is not an ideological challenge for me, but rather a math problem. On Howard Street, we have a project with rents as low as $1,300 a month. Completing this project allowed us to build a sister project next door that has rents as low as $1,000 a month. That's the 60% AMI rate that's being suggested in the bill. We also have several voucher tenants living in that building. The margins are super thin, and this project would not have been built with the laws currently drafted. I'm gonna take past this line, we cannot let the perfect outweigh the good. What is being described as a public subsidy is really just bringing Baltimore in part of neighboring jurisdictions. Our tax rate is more than double that of most. In fact, it would be our preference to have a more equitable tax rate rather than needing credits to offset it. I believe the goal here is to have a thriving economic environment that works for people of all backgrounds and income levels, one that provides for growth and that allows for additional support in the areas most in need. To the advocates, I hear you. And we are more than open to sit at the table to create a long-term solution that produces more affordable mixed-income units in the city. We would love to build more of it. I want to thank the members of the council for their time and energy dedicated to this important topic, and we all want to build a better Baltimore here, and happy to be a partner in that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Infume. Next up, we have Shorty Davis. Is Shorty Davis still around? Shorty Davis, are you in the other room? And then, last on our list is Ms. Sonia Ede. Last, but certainly not least.
Hello, everyone. Glad to be here tonight. Had to cancel my community association meeting to be here. My name is Sonia Ede. I'm a lifelong, third-generation city resident, long-life resident, and community president. I'm here to talk about black families living in Baltimore City. We weren't the property owners. Remember, there was a red line. There was a great white flight. Yeah, the system created the slums out of our neighborhoods. They poured all of the investment out. Fifty years later, whites and those who could afford to leave want to come back home. Well, they gave up their homes not wanting to live with us. Now, they're trying to come back and still not wanting to live with us. It is evident with the high rents, a person could own a $100,000 to $300,000 home with what they are paying for rent. Why is there battle over what our address is? Baltimore City caused the blight, and we have survived the ruins. We cannot and shall not be excluded. If it was not for us, there would not be jobs for any of you. We were your tax base, overcharged with no results. There were project high-rise buildings across the city, families caged in like animals. With all the money the housing received throughout the country where there were public housing, they did not do right as landlords. They had people living in inhumane conditions. This has become their practices. This is what we see as the future of our neighborhoods with these so-called high-rise luxury apartments. With that said, we should learn from the past and not repeat it. The city is allowing development of high-rise buildings hidden behind the concept of luxury apartments. I demand that y'all stop dumping these units in our neighborhoods. You don't want it in yours. This is not what was torn out of our neighborhoods. We lived in two- and three-story row homes, or one of the three units within a three-story row home in that block. Our property values have decreased because of these complexes forcing our neighborhoods to become transient. Therefore, we're urging you to stop right now. Invest money in our black neighborhoods that will increase the values of our legacy homeowners' properties. Impede policies that investors, that investors will have to keep housing rents and for sale properties at equal, in equal unit sizes if they, if they use any tax incentives from the city. If you ask any of my neighbors who benefited from the demolition of the Lexington Terrace high-rise projects, if they would give up their homes with their front porches and backyards to move into the newly-built high-rise buildings, they would tell you no. How do I know? The opportunity presented itself in Poppleton. Because of, because it has been at the last over 30 years now, their requests are renovations of their units and the opportunity to purchase, to own. With investors, when investors have gotten their return, they are gone, and we are left with poor property management, which begins the vicious cycle of poverty in future projects. You have the opportunity to bring the change needed to build a better Baltimore. So I urge you to please listen to the voices of your people and not continue to play politics with our lives. The investors aren't going anywhere. They see the wealth that we possess. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ede. At this point, that was the last name that I have on the sign-up list. Is there anybody else in the chambers who did not have a chance to sign up, who would like to have two minutes to speak to the council? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna provide the same opportunity for those online. If those online are interested in speaking, please use the handraise icon, and we'll call on you. I believe that there's one person so far. Mr. Green, if you could tell me the name? Uh, Graziano. We're gonna unmute you right now. You said Lauren? Lauren Graziano? Are they unmuted? If you can hear us, we can't hear you.
Hear me.
The floor is yours, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Council President and members of the council. Lauren Graziano, I'm here on behalf of the Maryland Multi-Housing Association, and I want to begin by thanking Councilmember Ramos for leading us in this very important discussion about how we expand affordable housing in Baltimore City. On a personal note, I myself am a Baltimore City resident, so this issue is very important to me. My colleagues, Mr. Schmidt and others, have done an excellent job of summarizing and providing some additional context around the existing tax credits and incentives in this area and why additional incentives are needed to make this policy economically affordable for our industry partners. And so I just want to quickly move through some specific recommendations we have with respect to specific provisions of the bill itself. Firstly, the bill as drafted would remove existing law around modifications, waivers, and exceptions. We would like to see that mechanism preserved in existing law. We think that strikes more appropriate balance between promoting affordable housing while still supporting new development in Baltimore City. Second, with respect to applicability, the bill stipulates that the inclusionary requirements would apply to what the bill refers to as wholly renovated structures. We think there's some room for clarity there, specifically some clarifying language that specifies that wholly renovated structures would not include things like standard repairs or maintenance to the property. Next, the expansion of the affordability period from 20 years to 30 years. We also see a need for clarity there. The bill discusses the transfer of control or ownership, but it's unclear whether that would apply to, for example, change in management of the property. And so we'd like to see some clarifying language there. And last but not least, as a purely technical matter, there is a provision in the bill that specifies the city or local agencies may establish additional requirements, and our response to that is, of course, you're welcome to put in new legislation or propagate regulations as needed, and so we would recommend striking that language. Thank you for your time, and again, thank you for raising up this very important issue. The Multi-Housing Association stands ready to be good partners as we move this bill through the legislative process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graziano. Is there anyone else online that would like to provide public testimony? Please use the handraise function, and we will unmute you. We're gonna give it 30 more seconds. If you could please use the handraise function, and then we will unmute you. I think that concludes our public testimony. I would like to thank everyone for, one, coming out and tuning in. Obviously, there are some dueling opinions about this topic, but I think everyone presented their opinion and their position and perspective in a very professional manner. I would like to thank and applaud you for your decorum. You know, obviously, many of us, if not all of us, understand and know the troubled history of Baltimore, specific to real estate. We understand and know that many of those issues not only have residual effects for us today, but are perpetuated in some of the policy that we have in our books today. I know that many of us are interested in trying to dismantle that as systematically as possible. That's why we're all here today. There is a additional work group meeting that is scheduled. Do you have a date by chance? December. It's on December the 12th, 5:00 PM. I believe that's a Monday, where we can go over any additional amendments here, additional commentary from the agency, and figure out what the next path forward is for this bill. So again, thank you for tuning in. This concludes... We're gonna put in recess, I'm sorry. This is, we're gonna go in recess, we're not gonna conclude, so we can keep the bill open. We're gonna put in recess for council, City Council Bill 22-195. We are in recess until December the 2nd? December the 12th, I'm sorry, at 5:00 PM. Thank you.